I am going to have, so welcome, everybody. I want to introduce the fiscal year 2025 city council proceedings. This is the Budget Subcommittee where it's an opportunity for councilors and department heads and the like to exchange feedback on this year's mayoral budget presented by Mayor Nicholson to all of us. We will be taking up a formal vote of this budget one week from tonight. It will be on June 11th. We will have the committee of the whole take on the proposed budget and have a public hearing with the general public at that time. But right now, this is an opportunity here from those impacted by departments. And I'm going to start off today's proceedings by calling up Chief Financial Officer Michael Bertino to come up and give us an overview of the 2025 fiscal year budget for the City of Lynn. Mike?
President.
Thank you, Council Field. Can we note that Council Field is present?
We note that it's 3:59.
Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you.
Lapierre. Because we have so many new councilors this year, I wanted to give an expanded overview of how the budget process works. Generally, each year in January, the governor puts out her budget. Last year, she didn't have to do it until March because it was her first term, so she was given a three-month. So, we always try to have departments have everything submitted to us as close to the January date as possible because that will allow us to match up the governor's numbers with the numbers we have. But because this year was a little bit different, there was talk of revenue shortages almost from day one on the governor's side. We actually listened in on their conference committee call in December. And that was December 4th where the House, the Senate, and the governor's office get together and they agree on consensus numbers for the fiscal '25 budget. So, we listened in to those numbers and then we put budget instructions together. We give those budget instructions out to all the departments and have them use that as a tool to create their submittals to the city. The reason we do that is because we don't want people, especially this year because it was a very tight year, we don't want them to be asking for things that, you know, you know, a whole new division or a whole new shift of people because deep down, we have an idea of what the revenues are going to be. So, we want people to be somewhat realistic about their budget submittals. So, when we look at them, we're not taking out the red pen, we're supporting them, we're developing ideas on how we can help them achieve their budgets. So, that process happens in January. We take the governor's numbers, plug them in. We start with individual budget meetings with the mayor, a few people from the comptroller's office, and myself. We go through the process. This year, we came up with a structural deficit. It's a little bit tighter. Obviously, inflation is hurting everybody. So, we put those numbers together. We actually had to reach back out one more time because the deficit was large enough that we needed some support from departments to, you know, reduce the deficit. So, with the combination of memos we received from department heads, small increases in fees across the board for departments that are allowed to charge fees, as well as not filling in some legacy positions on the city side, we were able to submit a balanced budget. So, tonight, everybody is going to submit here their budget. They're going to talk about the goals and objectives and what they hope to accomplish in fiscal year '25. As far as my budget goes, my budget is mostly personnel. I reduced several of my line items to help support the effort to reduce the deficit. So, we did that and most of my items reduced were for items that helped run the office, paper, toner, you know, folders for the budget, just small items. But the rest of it is made up of personnel. There's a few departments that aren't going to be here tonight, so you'll, if you have questions for me now, I'll answer them now. But those departments that I'll be speaking on their behalf because they couldn't make it for one reason or other, I'll speak on their behalf as well. But for the most part, you know, my budget has contractual increases and a small amount of money for office supplies and things of that nature. You know, my primary role is to monitor and control the budget and to advise the mayor on any and all financial decisions. And we'll be able to accomplish that and continue to move forward as we have done the past five years.
Excellent. Thank you, CFO Bertino. Any overview questions for CFO Bertino at this time? I do want to recognize Counsel McLean has just joined us, as well as colleagues who may not be part of the Subcommittee on the Budget, but I hear to listen and ask questions as well. Counsel Aminy, Counsel Allingson, Counsel Annette, and Counsel Meji Madri. So, thank you to my colleagues for joining us. Do you have any questions for Mr. Bertino at this time? As he said, he will be coming back up to make other presentations later on in the evening. Yes, Counsel Allingson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, thank you for the overview. We've reviewed the budget thoroughly this past few weeks. Just very interesting question about our budget last year, which is $488 million. And budget this year is $488 million, and next year is $517 million. That's $29 million more. What has changed?
For the increase in the revenue?
Right.
Most of the increase in the revenue comes in the form of Chapter 70, and that is the primary source of funds for the school department. So, the school department, we're still, I believe, and we're, I believe we're in the fifth year of the Student Opportunity Act, which has provided a substantial increase for the Lynn Public Schools for the last five years. This is actually the smallest increase that we've seen in five years, but it was still just under $20 million. I think it was like $18.8 million in new Chapter 70 money. We raised about $5.5 million in taxation and another million and a half or so of local receipts. So, that, that's the increase. We also had, we're in the final year of a contractual increase of 3.5%. So, that's also reflected in here as well.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Allingson. Counsel Field?
Thank you, Chairman Lapierre. Mike, just to piggyback on that question as far as the Chapter 70, is the, the new millionaire's tax figured into that Chapter 70 funding, or is that going to be something completely separate from the state?
Based on the revenues, I would say they're using some of that money because revenues, projections were down seven out of eight months. So, if projections are down and we're getting, you know, close to $19 million in extra money, I can't see how they couldn't use that money to fill the gap.
Right, so it filters in through Chapter 70?
Right. I think that, you know, they have a goal where we receive additional Student Opportunity Act money and then the minimum presentation for schools that are already at their foundation budget would be anywhere between $30 to $60 per student, depending upon what final budget gets signed. Because our, our budget is based on the governor's budget. It's now in conference committee and they'll come up with somewhere in between the House, the Senate, and the governor's budget. And then we'll actually rebalance one more time. So, I'm not sure if they were giving the minimum of 60, or that will be somewhere in between 30 and 60. But we are at a much higher level because of the Student Opportunity Act.
I actually know the House approved up to 104, and then the Senate came back with 110 per pupil, so $6 more. But as you said, it's now in conference committee, but we're at least going to see probably $110, which could be about $400,000 more for the LPS.
Millionaire's tax or just total?
That's just total formula and per pupil expenditure coming out of the House and Senate conversions.
Okay. And then, to piggyback that question, as far as like roads and stuff, do we see any increase on Chapter 90 from the millionaire's tax? Is that just?
I don't believe we did. I believe that we received just over $1.5 million, which is basically our annual contribution that we received from Chapter 90.
So, we haven't seen an increase because of that tax that was approved?
Correct.
During his last election.
I thought there was something we approved a few months ago for supplemental, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah.
It might have been about a little over a half a million, I thought.
Okay.
But again, it might have ran through the Ways and Means Committee and is now being used for extra street paving in the fall and so forth, or summer.
Yeah.
But I thought a chunk came through from that.
But that, that was part of a supplemental, which was part of fiscal year 2024.
So, that, I think that's what my question is. Are we going to see supplementals like that for educate, for education and road construction? Or is that going to be snuck in through Chapter 70 and Chapter 90?
I think it'll, it'll probably hold them to their original commitment. When they talk about infrastructure, I, transportation, I don't believe roads was involved in that. I believe it was more of public transit, transportation, the T, the tunnels and bridges.
Right, yeah, it was, it was kind of presented at the vote as infrastructure, so I just kind of thought it would cover everything.
I, I think we are going to see more of it. They had just estimated that it's over the $1.8 billion they anticipated for the year with a month to go. So, that could climb as high as $2 billion in terms of millionaire's tax. So, it will trickle back to the cities and towns accordingly, I think during the next, after July 1.
Yeah, I think with it being so new for us to overs, like, we're looking at it in our first budget cycle since, you know, rather than the state kind of separating revenues from Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 and increasing these additional revenue stream into that and they're appropriating the money that would have originally gone into Chapter 70 and 90. So, I just want to kind of see how the state's doing it and if you're seeing anything different. But, you know, the Chairman Lapierre made a point that we did appropriate a part of it.
Oh, we did.
I thought we did too.
I'm not sure.
I just want to know like how you're seeing it as far as the state levels go. Because we should be getting more, obviously.
Right, but I, I think that with the revenues down, they're keeping everybody whole and they're keeping their original promises. That's the way I see it. They're keeping what they planned on doing. The extra because of the downturn in revenue, I don't think it's, the money is there.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions for Mike right now? Seeing none. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're going to call a public safety next. We're going to start with the Lynn Police Department and Chief Reddy. Chief Reddy, would you like to approach? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for providing this opportunity to me to offer some input on the proposed FY '25 Police Department budget. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for your consideration and support when determining our budget for the coming year. In the past, I have shared with you the challenges that law enforcement profession has experienced with regard to recruitment and retention of personnel, especially in recent years. We certainly experienced those challenges here in Lynn as well. We've worked hard to address those issues, but it's an ongoing challenge. However, I'm happy to say that currently, our staffing level, including academy recruits, is at 191. We have additional recruit officers scheduled to attend the next available academy in September as well. In the past year, we did significant work in the area of recruitment and as a result, participation locally within Lynn, participation in the police officer entrance exam rose by 50%. And we hope that that will result in further gains in hiring in the coming year. I am also hopeful that during the FY '25 year, the anticipated increase in staffing levels will enable us to sign, to assign additional personnel in the areas of need such as traffic enforcement, investigations, community outreach and engagement, school resource officer positions, and more. The FY '25 budget includes level funding of our overtime budget. This can be a challenging due to the unpredictability of events that occur throughout the year and which may require significant additional hiring as a part of our response. In recent years, we have also sought to increase training in multiple areas, including crisis intervention, de-escalation, active shooter, and more. I believe that these types of training are critically important to our mission and essential for officer safety and effective community response. In the event that these issues require additional or have an adverse impact on our budget, we will keep you informed. The Police Department budget is also predicated on the receipt of anticipated but not guaranteed grant funding. We have also been able to use grant funding to restore some non-support positions that have been unfunded in recent years. Although we anticipate receiving this grant funding in the coming fiscal year, it is not a certainty. Should we experience significant shortages in that grant funding, again, we will keep you informed. I'm grateful for the funding in our expense budget as it will allow us to continue to make progress in restore our fleet and reduce the wear and tear, or the effects of wear and tear on excessive use of mock patrol units. This is also important as we seek to add more special unit positions such as SROs and also in order to have police, police visibility at the many road construction projects that were occurring in the city currently and in the coming years. And then finally, the expense budget is critical to meeting the growing requirements for technology in our operations so that we can provide the most effective and efficient service to the community. Thank you again for your attention, and do you have any questions?
Questions for the chief. Counsel Field first, then Counsel Allingson.
Thank you, Chair Lapierre. Thank you, Chief. One of the things you just mentioned was traffic safety, traffic enforcement. Do you envision a full traffic unit as far as, anyway, what, probably one of our, number one complaints that we get as councilors is speeding. You know, everybody's asking for speed bumps on their street. You know, the whole city would look like a parking lot with speed bumps if we did that. So, I think, you know, it generates revenue. It's, you know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know already, but can you talk more on traffic safety?
Sure.
My first question.
And it's not only the number one complaint you get, it's the number one complaint we get, believe it or not. And it's everything from side streets being used as what people perceive as cut-throughs to really highly trafficked streets where there are speeding, or congestion, or improper turning, and a whole range of issues. Traffic is a priority of ours. We would like to beef up the traffic enforcement unit and have more targeted patrols, but all of our patrol division personnel are expected to engage in traffic enforcement as part of their daily operations as well. So, we do inform our officers of various complaints in hotspot areas on a regular basis through roll call. And then we seek additional grant funding through, the state has a grant program for traffic enforcement that we use regularly for additional patrols. And where we can afford it, we also increase traffic enforcement there as well. But increasing the staffing there is absolutely a priority.
Is there anybody that oversees that? Is there a traffic enforcement officer, like a gang, like someone in charge of the gang unit, you know, a rank officer?
Yes. We have a traffic, an OIC of the traffic unit. Currently, it is Sergeant Dave Hunter.
Second question, you talked about a lot of the road details. Is there any consideration for post-certification for retirees as reserve officers? I know some of the retirees from the Lynn Police Department serve in the hunt, they serve in swamp guard, it's a revenue for administrative fees for these road detail jobs. And I know when we, we had mass DOT here just a few weeks ago, you know, they had expressed a concern that they have a hard time filling some of these details. And with a lot of the state-funded projects just getting started, Lynnfield Street, Broadway now starting, we're going to have Essex Street, and then Western Ave is another $50-plus million project. I noticed personally that we're having patrol division control traffic situations that, in my opinion, road detail should be handling most of that. So, is there a consideration for the reserve officers or no in the city?
Well, those, how we can expand staffing availability for traffic enforcement, to answer your question, is yes, certainly under consideration. Post requirements play into that consideration. There are options that don't necessarily involve posts, that are all, all of this is part of things that we are looking at and evaluating and hoping to, to have substantive discussions on. I would also add, you know, when the DOT said that, one of their contractors is also very slow in paying, and that officers got frustrated, especially out-of-town officers, and were reluctant to come and work some of those. So, we've addressed that with them as well.
Okay, good.
But that was also a contributing cause.
Yeah, we heard that too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set? Counsel Allingson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you so much for that update. From the letter sent to us by our CFO, the Lynn Police is one of the few departments that has capital requests. I'm also happy to see that there'll be new 16 police cars coming to our city.
Yep.
What is our inventory right now? Why do we need 16 police cars? Are those, there's other 16 cars that are not?
Yeah, so honestly, we, in, prior to COVID, in the lean years of the city, when funding was scarce, we weren't purchasing Cruisers at a regular rate. And we're still recovering from that. So, what it, when you think on an average shift, there is anywhere from 10 to 14 or 15 marked Cruisers on patrol. We prefer not to run them 24 hours a day because obviously, it accelerates their, the timeline that they're available for use or effective use. So, we try to run them only two shifts per day. So, what that Cruiser commitment will do is help us to do exactly that. Some of the older Cruisers will come down and be used in service for SROs or in details of things like that, but it'll help us have newer Cruisers on patrol and address the, the needs for the patrol personnel to have good quality equipment as they go out and engage in their duties.
So, do we have, so we're not removing 16 old vehicles?
No, well, some will be, it's a trickle-down effect. So, literally, in the past year, several of our SRO Cruisers just, let's say, for example, a Cruiser 12 years old and has 150,000 miles, and now it needs a new transmission, the cost of all that is just not, it's no longer worth putting the money in, and we have to take them out of service. An evaluation is made all the time. We submit that as part of our budget request on, you know, the, the current status of all of our Cruisers. But what this, the new Cruisers will do is allow us to have sufficient Cruisers for the SROs, ones that are very old and carrying lots of costs for repairs, will be taken out of service.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited with this development. Actually, I actually told my colleagues this, this a few weeks ago.
We are too.
I remember when I first moved to Lynn, there's only one or two brand-new car.
Yeah.
And they use those cars for like parades, like whoever just started the parade because it's brand-new. And to see a lot of them here, I just want to make sure that you have enough parking spots in your, in your department, or we can utilize some of the parts here, parts in that cars for future needs. So, that's all.
Yeah, we don't get rid of Cruisers unless the cost of repairs or the condition really makes it necessary because we have so many uses for them.
You, thank you, Chief. You also mentioned about grant writing or possible getting grants.
Yep.
I asked you this question last year, and fortunately, we still have one dog officer, and it's always been a problem, most especially to our councilors, having problems with dogs in our parks where there's no dogs allowed. And I, it's also, I know JR's all doing his, his part, and I could not picture one dog officer wrangling a dog. It needs somebody there. Do, can your department, any of your possibility to hire another dog officer in a city of like 110,000 by now?
Yep.
And still having one dog officer, I think it's, it's not, it's not fair.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I have separate comments for the Animal Control Officer budget because it's, it's a separate budget from the Police Department budget. I can speak to that now if you'd like.
Anyways.
But, you know, again, we're grateful for the level funding, but the members of the council and many in the city know we've experienced significant challenges in recent years resulting from the animal control needs in this city. You know, first of all, one of the big challenges we have is that it's difficult to get backup when we hope only one officer, if he's away with his family for the weekend. We've had some great support from local communities, Lynnfield in particular. The ACO there has been fantastic, but recently, he's expressed some frustration because, you know, we do get a lot of calls. And if our ACO is unavailable, he's been a great support, but we have to, we have to give some attention to that. And I will have to come back to, to Mike Bertino and the mayor's office to address those issues in the future. We've also having significant problems in the boarding of animals, and these are not exclusive to Lynn either. You know, the ACO, JR Plod, under the direction of, you know, Sergeant Hunter, he's who he reports to, and Captain Brown in our patrol division, they've done a tremendous amount of research among other communities to find out how they're dealing with the issues of boarding animals. It's a complicated and challenging problem, not exclusive to Lynn, and we continue to work on those issues. But to your point, we are trying to develop relationships, formal relationships with the area ACOs and coverage when our ACO is either on vacation or otherwise unavailable. And it's going to be an ongoing discussion that we'll be having with the mayor and the CFO. I do also want to point out, they've done some really good work in being innovative and using social media and other sources to try to get stray dogs that we end up having to take possession of, try to get them connected back with their owners. And it's really been very, very helpful and successful. Having said that, in a city of well over 100,000, we have a lot of stray dogs that are simply abandoned, and we have to board them, and it's a cost. And I can just tell you, this is a difficult problem, and we continue to work on it, and hopefully, we'll make some progress soon.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go, thank you, Counsel Allingson. Go to Counsel McLean and then Counsel Field.
Hello, Chief. You mentioned that you would be allowing some, some money to, or some funds from your budget to outreach and community work. Has there been any consideration for restorative justice in that, in those line items? Because as we know, there's, there's been historical issues with black and brown communities with law enforcement and the system in general. So, I'm wondering if there's anything that you've been giving consideration to in along the lines of restorative justice?
So, we, we do community outreach and engagement and participate in, in discussions with groups throughout the city throughout the year. Being engaged with our community, building those relations, relationships through positive engagement is a fundamental part of our mission. So, yes, we, that is, it's not a separate line item, but it is part of what we do all the time. It's also part of our training commitment. You and I have had discussions about that specific topic. I know we have plans to talk to a local agency about how to actually do some of that work here. But again, we do not have a separate funding source for that, so we have to try to be creative at times.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Counsel Meji Madri. Oh, Counsel Field, excuse me. Counsel Field and Counsel Meji Madri.
You can go. Ladies first.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
First before a second, is that how we're doing it? Go ahead, Counsel Meji Madri.
Thank you, Chairman. So, my question is around safety, around the schools. Could you speak a little bit about, me and Counselor Metul, we're at a meeting at Ford Elementary School, and a lot of the parents were really concerned that there's no crossing guard at their school in particular. So, we are concerned about that. And can you just speak a little bit about like what the plan is as around safety for the kids and crossing guards?
Sure. So, currently, we have 27 of 42 crossing guard positions filled. The posting for crossing guards is essentially up all the time, and we're constantly seeking new candidates. But especially since COVID, we've had a much lower participation and turnover, and some of our crossing guards also sometimes are snowbirds, and they, they're gone in the winter months when they're still critically needed. What we do is our patrol division tries to work with principals and staff. We've recently worked the principal of Brickhead School to try to help them and deal with the problem. Our traffic unit and patrol have been working with Ford School for months, and we try to have a presence up there. I know the parking department is up there as well to try to address some of the issues. It is, it is a problem where in an older city with narrow streets and most of our schools were built for students to walk to school, and that's just now what hap, that's just not how it works anymore. So, particularly, more so in dismissal time because everyone's getting out at the same time, but even to some extent, on the morning arrival, we have significant, significant issues around many schools. We've had to address serious issues outside the KIP because the fire department was unable to respond to calls for service, so we've had to have a commitment up there. Our patrol divisions maintain a presence at lots of schools on a daily basis if they're not tied up on a call, and it's a problem we're working on. Having said that, I've also had discussions with the CFO and the mayor's office about the hourly wage for our crossing guards and the need, we're looking in, comparing how area communities, what they're paying, and we're going to have substantive discussions on that this summer and try to see what we can do that might help to, to draw, attract more candidates for those positions in the coming school year.
Thank you. And can you just speak a little bit about, you said there's 27 out of 42. How is it determined which schools get the crossing guards and which ones don't?
So, our youth services unit have, has an officer whose responsibility is to oversee all of the crossing guards, and she manages them. She gets input from the school, she gets input from her supervisors, she gets input, frankly, from us, and we evaluate where the need is. And it's, it's hard, you can't just do one, two, three. It's like, yeah, this is really serious here, and this is serious here. So, it's, it's subjective, but we do our best to put them where they are most needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Field, back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Lapierre. Thanks, Chief. One question I forgot to, to discuss, and I apologize. The SROs. I know after the uptick in violence earlier this year, and more specifically with Lynn Classical, your department was great at covering the school. Is there a commitment this budget cycle for a permanent SRO at Lynn Classical? Is there a commitment this budget cycle for a permanent SRO at Lynn Classical for the upcoming fiscal year?
So I've had discussions with Dr. Alvarez about this. We have, have been aware and continue to be aware and we support having SROs, certainly in all the middle and high schools. But again, it's a staffing issue. So our commitment is if we have the staffing, we intend to do that. Currently, we expect to add more SROs next year, but until August comes, I can't make a final determination, but that is our hope and expectation.
And how long does it take to train somebody to be an SRO?
They go to a week-long training and then there's other training. We're going to advance train people so that if, assuming that we have the staffing, we can put them in the position. Enough for at least our, our basic expectation.
And there's still coverage like there had been if there's not an SRO? If there's not a permanent SRO?
If an SRO is off for some reason, there's not coverage. You know, they have that assignment there, there's not. We made a commitment in response for a variety of reasons, to work with the school department, to work with the mayor's office, to address concerns of the classical community. But we've also had discussions about other ways to address security concerns and, you know, procedures and how to address those safety and the fear that that community was, was feeling. SROs are one piece of it, but that's not even their primary function. Their primary function is not security. It's to engage with the students in a positive way and build trust and, you know, and also engage in some proactive outreach and, and learning.
Right. That, I think that's exactly the point that we're, we're hoping to get to is if we do have a permanent SRO for all the high schools, we don't have to get to that violent point, hopefully. You know, with the lack of SRO, we, you know, it's going to probably be more common than not that you finally have to have the security part more than the outreach part. Thank you.
Councilor Hogan.
Chief, we are presently at 191 offices. What's the number you would like to get to?
Well, we're funded for 199. I'd like to get to 225.
So we're funded for 199 and you like to get to, and then if we get to those numbers, you'll be able to expand a lot of these programs, a lot of these things.
We expand incrementally as, as our patrol needs have to be first and foremost. We have to have cruisers and staffing available to respond for calls for service. We have a baseline, we'd like to build on that, but once that baseline's reached, we look at our special unit needs and then there's certain requirements, the body one camera program requires bodies, a lot of needs. But to your point, Council, we will be increasing special unit assignments incrementally as we get additional staff.
Now, the 191 in like the past five years, where is this, is this high for you?
We, no, we've been to 191 before and this goes back to the recruitment and retention issue that we've had in the past. We've been there before and we were hopeful and, you know, some, the state police might put on a class and then, you know, sometimes they put in a class and we have one or two guys that go and other times it's four or five. And then there, frankly, there are people who have just left this profession, which was previously unheard of. And then, you know, there, there are other issues, other officers decide, this legislation regarding the civil service process and civil service rules that are going to impact, officers quite frankly are going to be able to, if the legislation goes through, there's going to be a competition for officers. And they're, like any other human being, any other worker, they're going to look for what works best for them. So these are all things that impact our staffing levels. But to your point, if we stayed at 191, we'd be able to address a lot of the needs that we've talked about here tonight and then.
To give the force some credit, the young officers out there, the way that they're handling the community and they're impacting the community now, I'm getting a lot of compliments in my area, just that the bike patrols and everything, the community policing is working.
Yep.
And it feels like they're, they're part of the community now, they're at all the community events. You speak at all the community events and we just want to keep this going and we're happy with all these new police officers and, and we're happy to be and trained the right way, so.
Well, I really appreciate you saying that and, and I want to give all the credit to them. I, you know, we all talk about the new generation and the certain, the certain things that they do or the way they feel that can make us shake our head, but I will say overall experience with them is they do this job and they do it well, they engage in the community, they're accepting of all kinds of people and they just try to help people get out of whatever problem situation they're in. So thank you for the comments, Council. It's been our experience with them as well.
Excellent. Councilor Matul.
Thank you, Chief, for your time. I just have a quick question. Are there any plans to either replace or upgrade our, our speed meters? I know we have a couple throughout the city and I've reached out to, to a couple of officers and I keep getting the answer that the ones that we have are really faulty, the batteries keep dying out. So are there any plans to, to change them?
Speed trailers?
Speed meters. The live speed meters.
The meters that are on the poles?
On the poles, yep.
Oh, the pole, the pole-mounted, yeah, okay, yeah, the ones, yeah, so the, the pole-mounted ones have issues with the solar batteries and they have to be replaced more often, but the ones that we, we have control over some and the DPW has control over some, so I can only speak to ours, but Sergeant Hunter regularly checks on them and changes the batteries on, on a frequent basis. But they're not all under our jurisdiction. We also have several speed trailers that we deploy and rotate throughout the city to address complaints and concerns of neighbors as well.
Do you think what the number of what we have is enough or?
I think at this time it's enough because deploying them and managing them is also a function of personnel. You know, if we get a full traffic unit, I might come back for other things that can help us to address traffic concerns, but that's just one aspect. Last year, in our budget, we were given funding to purchase several more trailers and we did. So I think right now we're in a good space for that and we'll see what the future holds.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any, Councilor Net.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I have a question. How's the gang units doing? Do we have any?
Yeah, so the gang unit frankly has been really, really effective. They're doing tremendous work. We have a commitment of officers there and currently we're also rotating an officer there and for several month assignments. That gives patrol officers a little change of pace and they can learn some of the things that the gang officers are aware of and then take those skills back to patrol. But they have done tremendous work and they're out in the community, not only in the enforcement side. Just, just recently, they arrested two young men with firearms in the city just about a week and a half ago. So the number of guns they seized and other things have been critically important to keeping the violence down and I'm going to hope it continues.
Correct.
In addition to that, we have a strong relationship with the state police gang unit as well as several federal agencies and we work with them. The state police gang unit has a regular presence in Lynn and we're actually giving them some desk space so that they can continue that and we're taking advantage of whatever resources we can to address those issues in our community.
Yes, concerned because someone is coming and us, and yes, we see violence start to arise and so we are concerned about that.
Council, I just want to add that the enforcement is an important piece and we're committed to it and it's helped a lot to get dangerous and violent people. But the other side with the outreach where we work with LISOA and we work with ROKA and we work with our Shannon Grant Partners and we work with the schools to try to connect kids with services to get them on a better path. Jobs program that the city has got going is fantastic. That's, that's just as important as the enforcement piece and we're working hard on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Net. Anyone else? I'd just like to echo what Councilor Field said to you personally, publicly, thank you, the department in your collaboration and coordination with the mayor's office superintendent around the activities of last December and heading into the rest of the remaining school year. As a parent of a classical student, a rising 11th grader, I know Council Field, she has the same sentiment with the daughter there as well. We truly saw the, the real response of the LPD and we really thank you for your commitment and to the SRO program in general, but specifically to our secondary schools because as you described that role, it's so critical at that age to be a foot in the door, to really get, build relationships with middle schoolers and high schoolers, to prevent, be preventative of those tragic events. So as a parent and on behalf of all of parents who send their children, not just to classical, but to all of our schools, thank you for that response.
Thank you, Councilor. I just want to say that the credit really does go to the men and women who are out there doing the actual work and I cannot stress enough how proud, how proud I am of them and the work they do every day in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Also of note, I remember when Chief Reddy was speaking about the animal control officer, the first, we called them dog officers back then. In 1985, former Mayor DiVigilio appointed the city's first dog officer in Kevin Fonsworth. And some of you may remember Kevin, but he had the same 40-year history, almost 40 years, he's retired now, but lack of coverage, relying on neighborhood communities like Nahat and Lynnfield and so forth because other places didn't have dog officers like we did. And frankly, we're, we're to board animals as well. So it's funny to see almost 40 years later, sort of the issues remain the same and as we, as we obviously, you know, we care very much about animal safety and patrol and that was a kind of a tumultuous time in the city. There were pit bulls and a lot of things going on. I remember we reported to the mayor's office, not the Lynn Police Department, but, so that's a little history lesson for everyone on our first dog officer, the city of Lynn. We're going to move right along to our fire department with Chief Sullivan, if you would. Chief, come on up. Welcome.
4:40, you're on the clock.
4:40, all right.
4:40, start the clock.
Speed this up. All right, I want to thank everyone, Mayor Nicholson, Mr. Bertino, Mr. Spencer and all of your staff. I'd also like to thank our internal employees who helped us develop this year's budget. So from the fire side, as you know, we were asked to prepare a budget as fiscally responsible as possible and I believe we did that. This left us with the budget proposal you see in front of you. We had seven recruits graduate the Mass Fire Academy on May 10th and we're in the process of hiring three more as we speak. This will get us back to our complement of 180 firefighters, which should reduce some of our overtime costs. We transitioned in the beginning of the year to a new software package called First Do, which you approved last year. And as we bring on new modules in the future, I expect we'll be able to save the city even more money while also allowing our department to run more efficiently. As you know, we have four engines on order. I'm happy to say two of them have shipped from Florida and are here in North Attleboro where the customization is taking place currently. That should take about five weeks total, so I expect to see the first two in service by the second week in July. The remaining two are expected sometime this fall. We're working with the vendor in the city on the purchase of a new ladder truck. If approved, this ladder is expected to be delivered at the end of 2025. This is important for two reasons. First, ladders normally take over three years to build and this one we're going to receive in about a year and a half. Right now, we are borrowing a ladder from Peabody. We have two ladders that are broke at this, at this time. All of the surrounding communities are also having the same challenges with ladders, so getting another one to the, to the area is a paramount. There just aren't any ladders. So secondly, the EPA is changing their regulations in 2026 and we'd like to make sure we stay with proven technology as opposed to chancing a new engine design. This budget will also provide for more safety for our firefighters. One example would be the purchase of a new command board. This command board will give the incident commander more ability to track people and resources, so if there is an emergency such as a building collapse or lost firefighter, we'll know where everyone is located and who is best to start the rescue and if everyone got out safely. Another aspect of safety this contract will provide is the reduction in the chance of contracting occupational cancer. Our gear has been proven to contain PFAS, which is linked to cancer. Just this year, the manufacturers have made the claim they've developed turnout gear that they claim are PFAS-free. Our goal is to slowly replace all of our sets of turnout gear over the next few years and also create systems to reduce the time our people spend inside of that turnout gear. I'll touch quickly on fire alarm since it's a separate, separate budget before the question. So fire alarm hasn't changed much since last year. We did however have one operator leave, bringing us down to 11 operators. We haven't replaced that operator yet, however, we're working with the Personnel Department to establish a new civil service list. So with proper advertisement, we'll hopefully be able to attract a Lynn resident. So what happened in this, these past few years, trying to hire a fire alarm operator, we've exhausted even the statewide list. No one, no one was signing the list, so we'd like to wait for a new civil service list to come out and hopefully attract a, a Lynn resident. So in closing, I'd like to thank all involved in helping us prepare this year's budget and I look forward to your support.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the chief? Yes, Councilor Meany.
How you doing today, Chief?
Hey, how are you?
So I just, I'm just looking over your, your mission statement here and a couple items in your budget. Could you elaborate on what prime time expense is? You're spending about $350,000 this year on it.
Prime time is holiday pay. It's, yeah, it's just, it's holiday, it's how they, they term it.
Okay. And then, so I was reading your mission statement here, it says one of your goals and objectives is to quote, "Maintain a high level of safety for all of our firefighters." And then I look at the budget and I'm looking at a 15% decrease in personal protective equipment. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so going back to the, the turnout gear, so when we were preparing this budget, the manufacturers had not come out with this PFAS-free gear. So for the past few years, we've been budgeted for 40 sets of turnout gear. So we reduced that number initially, but now the claims have come out that there is the PFAS-free gear. But in our discussions throughout the state, they're not 100% sold on the manufacturer yet. So we're going to have some discussions on using that money if not for specific turnout gear, alternative means of keeping our people, reducing the time that they spend in their gear, if that makes sense.
It does. I just wanted to really ensure that like we are looking after the safety of our members of the fire department. I mean, cutting personal protective gear, granted, we didn't know what the nuances of it, but that's pretty glaring. And then I have just another question on your mission statement. One of the things we talked about together was data collection improvement. Is, would that be why the computer services have increased 20%? Are we, are you making a vested effort in trying to improve our data collection and record-keeping?
Yeah, so that First Do software, so one of the, one of the, the downfalls of moving to this new software is payroll calculations. So our office and the CFO's office have been working every week to make sure that our people get paid appropriately. This new software program has additional modules that would, we're bringing on as, we're rolling it out slowly. So right now, we're doing incident tracking and capital, capital tracking. So we haven't gotten down into the, you know, the, the items like the axes, the halogens, all that stuff. We're also looking into getting a fire investigation module and a potentially moving into an EMS module. So we use a separate program for EMS. So if we can move that into this one, as long as it, it works with the state, we'll save the city even more money.
And then just one last question. At any point during the last fiscal year, was the possibility of Engine 11 being reinstated brought up?
We're always looking to improve coverage throughout the city.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Field?
Thank you, Chairman Lepierre. Thanks, Chief. I have three questions. As far as the turnout gear that you talked about, what is the lifespan of the current turnout gear and what's the expected lifespan of new turnout gear? Just to educate.
So currently, the lifespan is 10 years. However, there are new OSHA regulations that are coming out. All projections are, is the new lifespan according to OSHA is going to be five years. They're, they're in public comments section right now. I hear they want to move this OSHA regulation. It's 192.156, I think. So there's some significant changes that OSHA is going to present to us. We have a team that's going through the projected regulation right now to make sure that we get ahead of it. We've already had some discussions with the mayor's office and the CFO's office on those changes as well.
Okay, now as far as budget for that turnout gear, you said 40, your, your goal is for 40?
Currently, so when the.
From the budget or is that through grants or both?
That's, that's through the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Grants for that too or no?
The whole country is going to have to change turnout gear, so the, the country is going to have to help somehow with that.
Sure. Second question, I know you and I discussed, I know last year with the, with the forest fires, now there's a new regional partnership. Can you discuss how that affects the budget?
Yeah, so the state fire warden reached out to us a few months ago and he was able to get us a $75,000 grant to improve firefighting capability. and he was able to get us a $75,000 grant to improve firefighting capabilities in Lynn Woods. Pretty open to what we could do with it. So we worked with DCR, we work with the Ranger Dance Mall, and other members of the state. We also brought in Lynn Field in Saugus as well to, to continue the discussions. So for this $75,000, it's not really a lot of money. We're figuring we're going to improve Ox pasture road. It's pretty tough to get any of the vehicles out that way. So that would be fixing some of those tricky spots and widening the road so that we could have back to the original road. The hope is, why we brought in Saugus and Lynn Field, is to treat it like one ecosystem. Us break heart in parts of Lynn Field. And if that works out, next year, we're looking at a potential $500,000 to improve firefighting in those areas. And, and that would be, you know, widening the, the fire roads, some of the single tracks. So without taking up too much of your time, I, I think it's important to know. So the first fire that we had, I forget the date, it was a Friday afternoon, the first fire we had. We had every firefighter in Lynn up on, up in Wood One there protecting the houses. We had a couple mutual aid companies that came in, and we were able to, I initially thought it was only 20 houses, but it was closer to, to 60 houses that we believe we saved with that. The, two or three days later, we had another fire up by Stone Tower. And then a day later, we had another fire down by the reservoir. That last fire was the largest of the three, and we were able to contain it with three firefighters. Why? Because of knowledge of the woods, knowledge of, you know, the, the trail systems, and we just had them contain it. So in one case, we had houses at risk. You know, we're going to do everything we can there. And then where there's no houses at risk, fire is a good thing for the woods. It replenishes the, you know, the, the wildlife, it replenishes the vegetation. So we can't have that where there's, where there's houses.
Thanks, Chief. And my final question, how is traveling outside of the city for medical aides to Salem Hospital or other surrounding hospitals affecting the budget over this last fiscal year and into the new one?
Yeah, so time, getting our people back in service, you know, certainly is, you know, our turnaround rate. So if our people are out of service, then there's less chance of bringing in money for recouping those costs.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Sullivan?
I just got one comment.
Councilor Hogan?
Two weeks ago, out in Ward Six, we had a major gas leak. And your guys responded tremendously, and I just want to publicly thank you and your guys for holding down that whole neighborhood that everyone was pretty, pretty scared because that was a pretty loud gas leak that, that could have really impacted a whole neighborhood. And, and you came to the scene under your circumstances that you were going through. And I really want to thank you and your guys for that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chief.
Yes, Councilor McLean, then Councilor Allison.
I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly, because I'm seeing that most of your, most of the time that you guys leave the, the firehouses, you're leaving for medical and service calls. So I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, that there's an EMS separate from the, the ladders and fire trucks that you guys have?
So we have six engines, three ladders, and one ambulance. So that one ambulance, you know, is a paramedic-level ambulance. So they're able to start IVs, use defibrillators for, you know, heart attacks and such. So when they have to transport, they'll transport to Salem Hospital or Mass General. And, you know, that turnaround time before they can get back in service to, to answer another call is what Councilor Field was talking about. Excuse me. We are, we are backed up by Cataldo ambulance. They staff three BLS, which is basic life support, and one ALS unit as well.
Okay, and I see somebody, the free cash was requested for the compression units and cardiac monitors and things like that, so...
Yeah, so that's one of our capital requests. So that's two, the manufacturer is called Lucas, so it's a compression device. So if someone, it's, it's a CPR assist device. So American Heart Association, when they're teaching CPR, you have to be perfect. Otherwise, the, the, the chance of survival is not, obviously, as good. These CPR assist devices are compression, it's a mechanical device that does CPR, and it does it perfect. So the first year that we, that we got these, we got one, and our save rate was doubled. So it truly saves lives.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Allison, then back to Councilor Field.
Thank you, Chairman Lapierre. Chief, there's a, a question, and same time, recommendation probably. Have you entertained the idea of anywhere in your budget that has, says goodwill trips to some of our firefighters? If there's like goodwill visit to Ireland, for example? I'm just being, because I remember going to Boston, and when I used to live in LA, I see firefighters from Tokyo visiting the city on a goodwill visit. Do we have that somewhere to, as part of like engaging our firefighters to learn or to have goodwill experience somewhere out there?
To answer the question directly, no. That's not in the budget. I will say that we have a phenomenal group of individuals. The volunteerism is outstanding. So I, last year, one of my goals was to be a better community partner. And, you know, our people have really stepped up and answered the call. I would love to pay them for something like that, but that's not, something like that is not...
It will be in the wishful thinking, moving forward.
I would love to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Yeah, and thank you for hosting the city on Saturday. It was a great event sponsored by yourselves and Lynn Police Department. So that was really nice Kids' Day and Family Day. So thank you for that as well, on top of everything you, you and your department do. Anything else for Chief Sullivan? Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Before I step away, I just want to thank you all for the nice flowers that you sent our family. My wife's mother had died a week and a half ago, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
My condolences.
Thank you.
We're going to go with Superintendent Dr. Alvarez. Dr. Alvarez furnished us with a supplemental memo as well before the meeting, so you may have that, along with the whole city, the school department budget, excuse me. And Dr. Alvarez, thank you for joining us. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Lapierre, and good, good afternoon, all councilors and everyone joining us today. First, I want to thank everyone within our family at LPS. This was a difficult year to actually balance this budget for a number of reasons, which are discussed in this memo, and I'll explain as we go through this. So we knew during the school year and for the past two years that the ESER funds would end. And so that sort of created, you know, a number of challenges based on everything that was being paid for out of ESER, and then what the impact, so I'll share a little bit about what the impact on our, on our budget was. So we had a general understanding of those intricacies, what that balancing would mean. But overall, I just want to share that the percentage of those funds that were spent on instructional salaries and materials was 54% of the funds that came in from ESER III, and 46% were spent on facility upgrades and capital improvements. That was one of the reasons, right, that ESER was actually given to school districts to do HVAC improvements, to create spaces that were appropriate and had enough space for all students to have the actual square footage that they needed based on the, the pandemic. So those were met. But according to DESI, DESI has a formula of what actually, what expenditures can be counted in learning loss. So of that, the, the total amount being $42 million, for ESER III, $11 million met the requirements of learning loss, according to DESI. That doesn't mean that we didn't spend additional funds, right, on instructional resources. It's just that they have very specific requirements for learning loss. Those things would be like things like summer school materials for remediation tiered resources. So the total budget for the DESI, from DESI, for next school year, the allocation for Chapter 70, as you see, is $287,160,866. The district's allocation is $249,450,000. And the city's allocation to support LPS is $37,710,866. So for this school year, the state provided an additional $27,173,054. The government's, the governor's budget for next year provides $18,68,699 as an increase, overall increase. So since we knew that all of these funds from ESER need to be expended by the end of September, there were a number of things that needed to be transferred out of ESER into our Chapter 70 in order to make sure that we did not lose personnel or services for students. The first one was $4.8 million in raises, $1.1 million in step increases and lane changes for instructional personnel, plus $7.8 million in salaries. That totaled $13.7 million. Then we had social workers and clinical supervisors that were committed to the previous two year, the previous year. And so that was $7.8 million plus fringes totaled $8.5 million. And then we had $2.8 million in budget adjustments because each year we look at, obviously, student enrollment, the needs of each of the schools. And after going through what we do, we start in late February, early March, we start reviewing with each principal and each department within LPS. We start just reviewing like what are the actual needs of students? What do we have to have for the instructional program? And principals sit with us for an hour, an hour and a half each to review what their staffing needs are and what their materials and resource needs are. So that's how we come to a total number of what it is that we're going to spend and what the allocations for each school building are. The last item there on the bottom of page one was just an adjustment of positions. If our population for a specific subgroup increases, we increase personnel. Sometimes it decreases somewhere else, that, you know, it works inversely the same way. On page two, at the top, we've given you a table for your reference in terms of what the financial categories represented are. Just so you have an idea of what happened from funding year 24, 23 to 24, the increase, which was roughly $27 million, and then from 24 to 25, it's $18 million. So there has been an increase in our budget. It's just that we've had other parts of our budget, like ESER III, that disappeared. So we had, you know, several, I don't know, I would say over 15, about 15, $16 million to make sure that we balanced, right, and that we managed to absorb in Chapter 70. Understand that our budget for the school district is 80% personnel and salaries. So it doesn't give us much room to actually say, we're going to use, right, the other 20%. The other 20% is spend on, spent on instructional materials, resources, and all of the, you know, safety needs that our, our schools actually depend on. So while adjusting this budget of $249 million for next year and $450,000, we really wanted to have close alignment in our district's vision, investments, and make sure that the instructional program and student services were our main priority. Not to have a reduction in force, not to, right, so that all personnel was in place to the best of our ability, including all instructional materials for the instructional program and delivery of content. On page three, I just want to point out that really our, our, our plan and our goal objective to make sure that this budget is invested in the areas that we believe will make a difference in supporting our students to achieve an increased student achievement accomplished to the best of their abilities and fulfill their potential is really taking our school district focusing direction, meaning we are clearly defining our educational goals, cultivating collaborative cultures, so creating our environments that encourage collaboration and shared responsibility, securing accountability, which means we've spent the entire year really looking at systems and structures, establishing those that we needed to put in place in order to function effectively, and also deepening learning, which means we were continuously improving our understanding and approach to teaching and learning with principals and teachers. So under that, you have some areas of equity in action, which I will not go over. And on the last page, you have a breakdown of the areas of spending. It's a nice salary summary, which also includes grants, not part of, obviously, Chapter 70 or 74. But if you have any questions, I will gladly take them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. Questions for the superintendent?
I have a question.
Councilor Meany?
Superintendent Alvarez, I just had a quick question. So you were just saying that 80% of this $240 million budget goes to salaries. Of that, that's about 200 million. Of that 200 million, how much of that is to non-teaching roles, administrative costs?
The breakdown of instructional versus non-instructional?
Yeah, it's, it's, you gave us a little pie graph here, but it doesn't really kind of go into detail. Like, it just kind of groups different departments as a whole.
Right, so I think Mr. McHugh is probably looking at his actual numbers. And he can share the, I don't want to give you a wrong percentage.
Can he go to the microphone?
Sure, sure. It's 6% of...
Where's the heat? Is it portable?
Correct.
So about 6%, so 6% would answer the question? Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions? I just had a comment to the fact that, I know you mentioned it briefly, but the inclusion of a diversity, equity, inclusion, Mr. Bishop now to sort of counterpart, Citi Faustina Cuevas, I think was a really smart and inclusive position that the schools really needed. So I commend you for that filling of that position. And I know he's doing really great work in collaboration with Faustina whenever they can collaborate on city and school issues. Can you address, there's been a little talk of, or a lot of talk actually, about the vacancies. What we're doing, there's about 200 positions, I think, currently, that people, if they wanted to work in our Lynn Public Schools in the fall, they could apply, they could have interviews and, and be selected and so forth. What are we doing to recruit around those positions this summer?
Sure. So after the teacher call downs, meaning the first round of teachers wanting to work outside of the current buildings that they're in, we had about 203 positions that were still vacant. There's, there's a number of things that happened. Some of those positions are current, perhaps, teachers that were not in a permanent position, who are required to reapply, would end up reapplying. That means that they started, for example, late, they were covering some, you know, a position that was encumbered by someone else. So we do anticipate a number of those positions being filled by employees that we had but were in a, a non-permanent role, right? Other than that, we have, HR has developed a recruitment plan and effort that includes outreach to some organizations and partners that we have not worked with before, especially those where we would be able to, hopefully, recruit some educators of color as well or bilingual, and/or bilingual educators. And we anticipate that, you know, not just in, that would be, hopefully, in some of the, the five primary languages that are spoken widely among our students. So we do have a detailed HR plan regarding that. We're in the process of implementing that. And we're also hoping that, since there are a number of reduction in forces in neighboring towns... a number of reduction in forces in neighboring towns and cities, especially BPS, and a number of other districts who have not been able to balance their budgets and basically let go of a number of teachers, that we would get some of those teachers as well.
Non-renewed, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions? The last thing, my last question is, the term frozen's been come up a lot, the term frozen in terms of budget line items. I talked to Mr. McHugh just previously to tonight's meeting, and he informed me that this is a couple years of fiscal years that he puts placeholders in, in terms of a dollar, let's say, for a given position. And then I call these positions, because we've had it on the city side as well, they're technically specialized jobs that require certain licensure to be in the position. Can you explain what's happening with those positions and what the chances are July 1 that you'll be hiring some of those staff back as well?
That's correct, Counsel Field. What's happened in those, I'm sorry, LaPierre, Brian and Brian. Sorry.
I'll tell you when the funeral's, he could tell you how to negotiate a teacher contract.
Not mutually exclusive. What's happened is that some of these positions are very difficult to hire for, speech-language pathologists, reading interventionists, those that require certifications for multilingual language education. And so essentially, these positions, the instructional ones, have been open for two years, two consecutive school years. So really, what we've, what we've been doing is, the funds end up being used to compensate another employee who's, you know, actually completing the function of providing the service to the student, but we know that we're overwhelming, right, our current staff because they're taking on extra responsibilities. And so we've heard that feedback from our teachers and from other staff members, non-instructional staff members, that when, you know, that they can pick up extra students, right, and student caseloads in extra periods to teach, but it is very taxing on them. And so those funds have been used to cover those positions, those part-time, sort of, like, not guaranteed, we don't know what will happen from year to year. We are reaching out to colleges and universities to see if we can connect, right, to additional applicants that are interested in those fields. What we're finding is that there are few applicants that are graduating. For example, a speech-language pathologist degree is extremely expensive, and so we have less people going into that field. You know, it becomes very difficult to recruit when it's not something that, I mean, they come to the workforce, they get hired, and it's difficult to manage for them, right, that they may have taken out student loans, because it is a very expensive degree. That's just one example. Reading interventionists, very specialized, again, requires those credentials, as you mentioned. Same thing with, you know, being bilingual and having the credentials to be able to perform, you know, the specific task beyond just proving that you're proficient in another language.
Okay, great. Counsel Matul.
Thank you, Superintendent. So you said that we have roughly 200 positions that we are not filling in right now, so...
They're vacant, yes.
Yeah. So what happens to the money that gets budgeted for those positions?
The money is currently there as soon as they get hired.
Does that get rolled into, like, a free cash account, or does that go back to...
No. It's reinvested into, like, the salary savings while someone is not in the position is reinvested into personnel.
Okay.
Yeah. We are, we don't, we don't shift categories, right? Like, if it's budgeted for personnel, it goes back into employee salary. And it covers a number of things, including, right, whether they're non-certified, but there are so many expenditures. At the end of the year, your last payroll, Kevin, the last payroll last year was in the amount of what, when employees cash out, vacation time and sick time. Just one payroll is about 13 million at the end of the year, so in the month of, like, now in the month of June.
So the idea is, obviously, hire up during the summer months and maybe call people back and so forth to get folks into those positions, or go to substitute route, or, you know, try and get positions that student-facing of vacancies.
Correct.
We don't expect to open our doors in the fall, your doors, with 200 vacancies. It's just at this point in time. That's why you mentioned the other communities that are non-renewing staff and so forth.
Yes.
They may apply here.
Well, BPS is closing half of their schools.
Right, right. Yeah, I know Lawrence and Amesbury and Valrico, there's some layoff talk, or non-renewal talk. All right, anyone else? Counsel Amini.
I just had a general question, so based on what you just said. You said that some committees, cities and towns, specifically Boston, are closing schools. So, given that more than one community has overcrowding issues, has there been any kind of ideas talked about as far as transferring kids to schools that are vacant so they don't close schools or lose jobs? Has that been any kind of discussion?
Not among superintendents necessarily. I think what, there is a process to do that, and some other towns have explored that, and they've, you know, requested to use buildings in other towns that are close by. And it's not beyond the realm of possibility for us, you know. We've talked about, how could we do something like that in the future? Not this coming year, but moving forward, even if it's a temporary situation while we relieve our overcrowding.
Yeah, my point being is, we can't build schools fast enough to accommodate the growing population.
I'm following right along.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we're happy to say that Pickering Middle School is going to be a new school for our district and our community, which has been years of work. And, you know, a week from tonight, we'll have a public hearing on other space matters as well, so we are partnering with you in terms of the difficulty in our overcrowding, particularly in the secondary schools, so. Anything else for Dr. Alvarez?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bertino, can we bring you up for just comments on your own department, the CFO's office, and then if you wouldn't mind for Steve Spencer, who can't be with us, the comptroller's office as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, my primary role is to monitoring the overall budget. So we've completed that budget, and what I want to point out is a few very important items in this year's budget is the projections. Each year, we do a five-year projection. And the way a projection works is, the closest year to the current year we're in is the most accurate, and then it gets a little least, a little less accurate as the years go out, because God knows what's going to happen in three to four years, but we do know what's happening in the next year, and it's going to be an uphill battle for the city and the mayor and myself, and I'm sure the council is committed to making it work. So we're going to be spending a lot of time looking for solutions to next year's issue while we're preparing to roll out this year's budget and just do the normal monitoring of the budget, which is done primarily in the comptroller's office. Steve, the comptroller, is at a conference required for his continuing education, and his staff closely monitor the budgets, the budget line items. They work with our external auditors and complete the annual audits, as well as all the grant filings and the record-keeping. And for the most part, the comptroller's office is the keeper of records for the city. All the original contracts should be filed with him for everybody in this entire city, all the vendor contracts and everything. So my office is essentially an extension of his office. We work very closely together. You know, last year's budget, we knocked down one person because we were able to do a lot of cross-training within the departments, so we kind of shared the loss of one person. We spread it amongst a couple of other job responsibilities. Fortunately, we didn't have to do it this year, but his office keeps very tight watch on spending as well as purchasing and grants throughout the entire year.
Great. Any questions for Mike in terms of the comptroller's office or his own office, the CFO's office? Counsel McLean.
I just would like you to explain free cash, like, where it comes from, what it is. Could you just define that?
So assuming the city of Lynn, assuming this was our first year in business, so I come out and I make a projection of revenues. I calculate on how much revenue I think the city's going to take in. And then we take all of the expenditures for all the departments, so using close to actual numbers. So I tell the mayor, "Mayor, I think we're going to take in 500 million in revenue," which means we can comfortably spend 500 million in expenditures. So during the course of the year, you know, I report and I monitor the revenue and I wonder what's going on, and I see that, hey, it looks like we're doing a little bit better than we're, than we stated. So we may take in 508 million dollars in revenue. Well, I told the mayor, we could only, you know, project 500 million, so that's roughly 1 and 1/4 percent. So that extra 8 million, no one has the right to spend it because we only came to the council to spend 500 million, so that extra 8 million goes down to free cash. Additionally, everybody's budget is calculated out to the nearest penny when it comes to salaries and things of that nature. Expenditures, not so much, because that relies on the individual department head, on whether they're buying salt to salt the roads or tires for the police vehicles. So at the end of the year, we look at all the expenditures, and because of different items, maybe they spend 495. So that 5 million that they didn't spend also adds to free cash. There's also, I use the example stating that this was our first year in business, but essentially, that's not the case. Obviously, the city's been around a couple hundred years. So we have a beginning and ending balance that fluctuates. There's also a formula that the state uses to calculate it. So we know we took in 8 million more in revenue, and our department spent 5 million less, so that's 13. So I'm going to have 13 million in free cash. Now, what could happen with that is, each year, we send out 148 million dollars in tax bills. In a perfect world, we'll receive 148 million, but that's not the case. Sometimes we take in 145 million, and we work the other 3 million throughout the next year, sending notices and delinquencies. So that money can come in the following year. That contributes to free cash. And it works the same way, where if people receive grants and they didn't submit their grant reimbursements in a timely fashion, I get hits to free cash. So if I got a grant of $200,000 to, say, you know, buy new widgets, and we didn't follow up and request reimbursement in time, then the state's going to look at my numbers and say, "Okay, you have 13 million to the positive, but you didn't collect 800,000 in grant monies, so we'll allow you to spend the difference," which is about 12.2 million. What I've done in other years with boards of selectmen and councilors, and we do this, the comptroller does this as part of his year-end process to the state, he fills out all of the information so they can prove where we got our free cash from. I'd be happy to do that the next time free cash is certified, because it's only good up until June 30th, because that's when our year-end closes, and then that whole process is a whole new calculation. So from, so over the last probably two council meetings, you'll see that I've taken our free cash and I've put it in savings accounts and stabilization funds, because come June 30th, that money is no longer available until it's recertified. The reason I leave money on the table is, hey, maybe I was a half a percent off on my projections and I only collected 498 million. Well, then I'm not going to have, I'm going to have a $2 million shortfall there. Hopefully, if I recognize that, I'll tell departments, I might freeze spending, say, May 15th, and say, "Only buy if it's an emergency," because a certain aspect of revenue didn't come in that I anticipated. So all of those different factors come into the calculation of free cash. But I'd be happy to come before the council, whether it's the entire council or in small groups, and show you how our operating results, because that's what they are, their operating results. Free cash is more of a performance metric than anything else. It's really unique to Massachusetts. It's kind of like spending the equity in your house through an equity loan. That is at the bottom portion of our balance sheet. Free cash is in the equity section. Massachusetts allows us to reappropriate that because they've taken away all the negatives that could happen, and they allow us to spend that.
Okay. And then just one more. What is our local receipts?
Local receipts are made up of motor vehicle excises, they're made up of building permits, they're made up of burial permits, birth certificates, Medicaid reimbursements, all the money that comes to the city on behalf of our local economy. So local receipts is a good measure of our local economy. Sometimes we'll hit 4.5 million in building receipts, and I'll be really happy and smiling. Sometimes we'll hit 2.2 million. Sometimes the difference between those two numbers could be large developments that generally come in and spend 700 or 800,000 dollars on a building permit. So when you're analyzing the local receipts, which is probably the hardest thing that we do, is I take a five-year average of those and kind of smooth it out, and I'm, this year, I'm using 92% of the five-year actual local receipts. So 8% of that 22 million, which is roughly 1.6 million, I'm assuming I'm going to be 1.6 million over my estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McLean. Counsel Amini.
Mike, I just had a quick question. Would it be safe to assume, given the city's fiscal situation, that property taxes are going to go up the maximum 2.5% every year?
Generally, yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Counsel Amini. Any other further questions for Mr. Bertino? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving right along, could we have Elise, Treasurer Collector, come up? Elise Fannin? Welcome. Thank you, Elise.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to present my budget tonight. I'm here from the Treasurer Collector's office, and this year, we have our veteran Lynn Quinn retired this year after 38 years in the tax collection office and the treasurer's office. So that's a big hit to us, but I have a great team, and everyone's stepping up and learning new responsibilities and new aspects, a lot of cross-training's going on. So both teams are learning, collectors are learning treasurer's side, treasurers are learning collector's side. Most of our budget is salaries. We don't have that many expenditures. Our contracts go to regnante and stereo for tax title and foreclosures. Daily in our office, we collect real estate, personal property, excise taxes, and trash fees. With the assistance of Lighthouse Lockbox Services from Leader Bank, all of our bulk mail goes there to a P.O. box in Boston. They open on all the envelopes, scan the checks. So if you hear your constituents asking, "Why is my payment going to Boston?", that's the bank. It directly deposits it right in our account and helps us process these bills much more efficiently. By using them, we've probably cut our call log in half from people that used to complain, "Why haven't you cashed my check? I mailed it a week ago." It gets cashed immediately. That also frees up the time of the employees in my office to answer phone calls for people who have questions on their specific bills, late fees, interest, and we have more time for emails and working the counter. In addition, our biggest complaint is I did not get my bill. We're trying to... We're trying to come up with ways to counteract this and help people be aware that they're getting their bills, bills are due. We've updated our website, which includes a calendar of when bills are mailed, what type of bills are mailed, and when they're due. In addition, constituents can register on City Hall systems and sign up for email reminders and have their bills emailed to them. They can also sign up for automatic payments, if that's something they're interested in. We try to give them the most options of ways to pay. They can pay online, they can pay by phone, they can pay by mail, and they can come in the office and pay in person. As of today, we are ready. The trash bill schedule has changed. Those will be getting mailed out in July, so we are ready and waiting to start accepting those payments and any questions on those bills. On the treasurer's side, our duty is to receive and invest all revenue that comes into the city. Currently, we work with a dozen different banks to diversify our investments. So God forbid something happened to one bank, we're not in trouble. We've got our money spread out through multiple banks. My job is to continuously monitor interest rates and make sure we're getting the best return with the lowest risk. Right now, interest rates are pretty good at banks, but I don't anticipate that lasting all year long. So as a result, we have locked in some funds in between 12- and 14-month CDs to lock in higher rates, just in case they do tend to drop. In addition, our office disperses payroll and accounts payable checks, and we monitor the stability funds that Michael Bertino was just speaking about. We understand this year, the budget is a little tighter than usual, so we're more than willing to closely monitor our expenses and stay within that, and we'll focus on watching interest rates and seeing how much we can earn to help balance this budget.
Excellent. Thank you, Elise. Any questions for Ms. Fannin? Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. How about Chief Assessor Chris Gator? Chris? Welcome.
Thank you. So the Assessing Department, we oversee all the real and personal property values in the city. One of our, you know, big year-end goals is our new growth calculation. Over the past few years, the council have been very supportive of some of the new technology the Assessing Department has come online. This budget allows us to continue in that direction. We're able to continue to expand our GIS and mapping capabilities, reach all of our DOR directives, and we continue to defend the utility values with National Grids. So all, those are really our main objectives, and within this budget, we're able to continue forward.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Gator? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Next up is Tim Leonard, our purchasing agent. Hi, Tim, welcome.
Just here to talk about the purchasing budget. Our expense budget is very small. It's just over 50,000, which, believe it or not, 75% of that is all the copy machines in the building. So once you take that away, it's barely anything. It's myself and a staff of four. This, my staffing levels have been the same since I got here. I think in 2018, I was here for four months. We backfilled a position that was open due to retirement, but since then, it's been the same. And this is, and I'm proud of it because with the ESER funds, the OPERA funds, and all the projects that we have had going on between Mike Donovan and ISD and Andy Hall and the school departments, it could have been very challenging, but over the, since I got here, we've implemented electronic bidding. We use electronic, digital bidding sites to bid our larger projects, which the small cost associated outweighs the time management that would have had to have been done, especially right now where we're bidding all these projects for the parks, the Pickering. I deal with Left Field, who's our OPM on the parks, who's the OPM on Pickering. Everything's digitized. We still host it in our office and send out, you know, do all the bid notifications and everything. But when it comes to projects that size, I think recently we had a project, there was nine addendums now. Trying to manage one project with nine addendums would be a handful, but since it's all digitized, there's no chance of any mistakes, because one mistake and one contractor doesn't get that bid document, it could blow up and we'd have to start over. So again, we just, we've maintained our staffing levels, and the only thing I have this year is, like I mentioned with the copy machines, the three-year lease is up in September. We'll have to get new leases for all these copy machines, but I think there's enough room in there. I got some people in this room who want color copiers, but we'll just address that as the time comes, but we should be fine.
We lease or own those printers you refer to?
We lease the copy machines. Technology changes so fast, it wouldn't be right.
And a maintenance agreement like a multi-year contract? Questions for Tim? Mr. Leonard? And do I had, oh, Counselor McLean, go ahead.
I was wondering, thank you, I was wondering about the website. Have we done anything with making it ADA compliant or better for people that have site issues?
I believe the mayor's office is working on that.
All right. Thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, I think the mayor's office is working on it.
Thank you.
We're going to have John come up later too, so maybe you can address that after. That'd be great. Tim, can I just ask one thing, just for my own clarification? When you talked about the coordination, let's say, with the school department or the, all of the departments, there must be some way, but you mentioned tracking, and if one thing goes wrong, do we have like a master, like a DocuSign, where everyone's able to sign off on something, so it is?
Well, we do have DocuSign. That's more for contracts.
Uh-huh.
That's strictly for contracts, once it's awarded, it goes through the system.
So you're familiar with Docu?
Oh, yeah. We've had that.
In your office?
George says that's going to be my legacy when I leave, there's DocuSign.
I know, he must use it too.
Yeah. No, most of the projects are just.
If they need it.
Yeah. Oh, definitely. Yeah, if anybody needs to use it, they just need to email me or let me know, and I can set them up and even show them how to use it. It's very simple.
Excellent. Good to know. Okay. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? That was it? Okay, we're moving right along now. Our IT Director, Peter Estarios. Estarios.
Like it sounds.
Peter, did he have to leave?
Peter.
Oh, you're here, Peter. Yes.
Yes, Peter is here, but I, together, we spearheaded, well, all Peter's work, but, you know, we put in motion a major IT upgrade. As everybody is aware, and Pete is here to answer any technical questions, but as everybody is aware, cybersecurity has become huge, and this started about a year and a half ago. We took, we did an IT assessment of our entire infrastructure, and what we found out is although City Hall was fine, some of our other departments weren't fine. So ultimately, they did a penetration test, which is, they basically send out a program to see how easy it is they can get into our system. They couldn't get into City, the City Hall, but they got into other systems, which allowed them to backdoor into City Hall. So we sat with the mayor, we talked with a number of vendors, picked a vendor on the state bid list, and have been going through, we're at the tail end of probably a 12-month project where we transitioned from servers that were housed in City Hall and at the police station to mostly cloud-based servers with, you know, state-of-the-art technologies. So we couldn't, so hopefully, knock on wood, we won't be as vulnerable as we were, because if you can get in through one door, you can find your way to the rest of the system. So it was eye-opening for me, you know, IT is under my umbrella. I'm gracious enough for Pete and his team to take the ball with this and work with it. It's been a long, long process, but we're nearing the end, and hopefully, we'll be able to have backups with everything. A lot of the stuff the police department was talking about before, a lot of their data with their body-worn cameras takes up so much more time and space. So all this stuff is now going to be protected under one area, and that's why you'll see there's a bump in his line item, and that's to cover us on things that weren't supported before, and we're also getting away from standalone servers. So previously, certain departments were wanted to upgrade because their particular vendor wasn't able to offer us the latest and greatest, and some of it was because we didn't have the space or we didn't have the 25 or 35 grand to update the server, and that takes time and effort, and we only have three individuals in the IT department. So hopefully now, with this major project, and a lot of people say, well, why didn't you talk about it more? Because I didn't want to talk about it because I just had a very good friend also get hacked, and they're a very affluent town. They got hit with a half a million dollars, and I didn't want to bring attention to it until we were completed. So in this closed room, I can tell you we're 95% completed on this. By the end of June, we'll be 100%, and then we should be able to rest easier at night, and hopefully, we won't make the paper like Nantucket's and Arlington and Brookline and some of the more affluent communities that were hit by, you know, cyber criminals. So that's the main thing. We also are moving away from our phone system, getting a new phone system, and all that is net neutral, because in addition to getting the new phone system, they went out and they found a lot of different lines that we no longer needed, a lot of the copper lines that we no longer needed. So that savings essentially afforded us to get a new, up-to-date phone system as well. So those, there's a lot going on in IT. So I just wanted to now, I think I'm comfortable saying that I think we're in a better place than we were a year and a half ago, and more importantly, the entire city is together, whereas certain departments were separate and on their own. Now it's more centralized.
Excellent. So you're warning all those unscrupulous hackers out there to stay away from the city of Lynn?
Yes.
We're not going to entertain any.
Right.
We got no money for you. Good luck getting that stone.
There's no money. Okay, good. Those are good, and obviously, to get them out from housed, the servers, I mean, barring a fire or something that could have happened in any way, now it's cloud-based, so we don't run that risk any longer, which is also very.
That's correct. There's, there's a lot of good, positive things that'll come out from this and that will realize efficiencies throughout the future. It's costing us a little bit more, but our overall IT spend was not that much for a budget of 500 million dollars a year.
If we could just make that password every six months or nine months instead of three, I'd be much happier, but that's fine. That's a separate issue. Does Peter, it is six, maybe a year, Peter, maybe you can expand on that a bit. I have to go in there every six months, and they are great in helping me, but are there any other, Peter, do you want to, any other questions for either Mike or Peter from the committee on IT stuff, or we're good? Thank you for that report. Appreciate it.
See you, Peter.
Okay. Attorney Markopolis, the Law Department. Welcome, sir.
I have to say, Tim Leonard deserves a lot of credit. He has organized all of our contracts. They're now in one place in the cloud, and DocuSign has made signing these documents much more efficient and effective, and there's verification as to who has signed and when they've signed. I give him a lot of credit for that.
Great. Excellent.
So good afternoon, George Markopolis, City Solicitor for the Law Department. With the exception of the vacancy in the third Assistant City Solicitor position, we are level funded. We continue to provide efficient and effective legal services. In addition to being a cost center, we also generate funds through litigation and fines. Speaking to Elise earlier, through some litigation that we're associated with, we've collected over 800,000 dollars within the last two years in an OPA national litigation that we've been involved in. I have provided you with a very brief 14-page overview of the office. Our current focus is dealing with numerous capital investment developments in the city. As Mike Bertino just mentioned, the transition of the IT internet services, the city's trash contracts, and also the acquisition, the major acquisition of Eastern Bank. I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, Michael Bertino, and my brothers, Jim Lamanna and Rick Vitale, for their hard and excellent work. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Questions for Attorney Markopolis? City Solicitor Markopolis? Yes, Counselor Field?
No questions. I just want to comment. I know you guys, it's a, it's not a nine-to-five job or an eight-thirty-to-four job. You guys are always there for us whenever we have a question, especially Attorney Lamanna. I know even during the snow emergency, over a weekend, he had to come into the office, you know, so your support to our council is not, does not go unnoticed by us as councilors, but may go unnoticed to the, to the rest of the city of what a vital role you play for us when we're discussing matters and meeting with constituents about their concerns and what the legal process is and advising us. So I just want to commend all of you, because you're not always front and center, but you're always there to support us, so thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Yeah, they definitely have a nice way of telling us no sometimes. Anyone else?
In explaining why it's no.
Explaining why. We want to do things, but they're not legal. Okay. Anyone else? Counselors? Counselor Matul.
Are we looking to fill in that, our third Assistant City Solicitor?
I would hope so. I would hope so. I would hope so.
I'm guessing that's why you have a decrease in payroll salaries, though, right?
That's correct.
That's been posted for quite a while. You're just looking for attractive candidates and none have panned out.
Actually, Drew Russo did a wonderful job soliciting numerous applicants, which he, Attorney Slattery, myself, Jim Lamanna, and Rick Vitale reviewed their resumes. They were excellent group of diverse candidates, most of which live in Lynn, and I do hope that the mayor gets around to appointing somebody.
Excellent. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to Mr. Donovan from our ISD Inspection Services Department. Director Donovan, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Inspection Services Department, it holds the three divisions, the Inspection Division, pardon me because I have a cold, if you repeat something, I'm glad to do that, Special Division, Facilities Division, and the Health Division. All three of these divisions provide support to the city in their stated fields and are currently working very efficiently, accomplishing the goals. In our mission statement, we have laid out all the things that we do, quite a few tasks, lots of pages, but essentially, we're here to provide for non-police public safety, non-fire public safety, to ensure that people, where they live, the traffic signals, the streetlights, if they've had renovations done on their home, their restaurants meet the food code, their apartments meet the sanitary code. So the Inspection Services Department meets with and interacts with citizens every day, and in doing that, we provide for a very customer-efficient, not always friendly, because when you tell people no, it's not always friendly, but customer-efficient response. Over the past year, there have been some changes in the operations of the department. The first and largest change was that in September of 2023, we brought in the apartment, the rental unit inspection program. The city has an ordinance enacted in 2020 that requires all apartment rental units to register and be inspected once every five years. That initially went out to a contractor because we did not believe that we had the resources to get it done. Working with the mayor, we found the resources. We've hired three people, four people actually, and since September, we've improved the operation of this registration program, performing a lot more inspections than the vendor had done and getting more registrations. Part of the, the lack of registration was the vendor could not issue citations. So for failure to obey an ordinance or conform to an ordinance, there is a citation, and without the stick, there was no response with some people. So the program is running very well right now. We've been in buildings that the. the program is running very well right now. We've been in buildings that the city officials have not been in, in these buildings for 20 years. One example, we went into a building, there was 29 units and 28 of them failed inspection. Minor things and then a bed bug infestation, but the result was that that building was cleaned up. Without this ordinance, we would not have gone into that building because nobody would call us to do an inspection. The tenants aren't likely to call, but that building was cleaned up and is now operating in accordance with the code. Another change coming that was made this year in regards to inspections is back in 2000, in early, late 18, early 19, plumbing, gas, and electrical inspections were outsourced because we were unable to find qualified and licensed individuals to do the work. We have changed the structure of the job, increased it to 40 hours, and the pay has been increased accordingly. So we are now competitive with other communities. And we are in the process of hiring a plumbing and plumbing gas slash and electrical inspector. And so come July 1st, we will have in-house electrical and plumbing inspectors, which we have not had since 2000, early 19. This represents a significant savings to the city. This department was able to give back a lot of money by bringing these inspections in-house to help work with the mayor and the CFO in bringing about a balanced budget for the city. So we've been very successful in the Inspection Division in getting that work done. In the Facilities Division, we continue to meet the goals in maintaining the buildings. Over the past year or so, year and a half, we've hired, replaced about 25% of our staff with new employees. More than 90%, almost, excuse me, 100% are from Lynn on the custodial side. Some of our tradesmen that have come in do not live in Lynn, but we've recruited extensively in Lynn to hire Lynn residents into these jobs. So we now have a full staff for our maintenance crew, where we did not for a few years. And our custodial staff is still running at full staffing. This year, we are undertaking the parks projects, the pickering projects, in addition to Fayette Street Fire Station Rehabilitation Project. And the project managers in the department are working well. We are encountering a lot of turmoil out there in the market right now. Inflation has not stopped in the construction side. Labor shortages have not stopped driving up the cost of business. And it really has shown we're seeing prices 30% to 60% higher than we did a few years ago. And it's limited the ability of what we can do in some areas because of the increased cost. The buildings are being properly maintained. This is more towards rehabilitation projects. For example, removing an asbestos tile and putting down a new tile used to be $4.50 to $5.00. Now it's between $10 and $12, depending on the vendor. So it's more than doubled in cost just to, and you know, there are probably over a million square feet of tiles in the schools that need to be replaced as time moves on. The Health Department has its new van. They're expanding a lot into new policies in regards to the food code, which has changed. And we're bringing the standards for restaurants up to date in the city with the new code. And by doing that, people have noticed that their licenses have changed in the past year. The type of license that you have has changed based on the business you've done, in some cases requiring more inspections. For a full-service restaurant, it's now three versus two a year. But for other variety store, convenience store, now it's only one a year instead of possibly two. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor Allenson, and then Counselor Meany.
Mike, thank you very much. Right off the bat, the payroll salaries under your department jumped to $400,000. Why is so? Is this because of the new positions we approved in the past?
That's from. Those salaries are the new people that have been brought in, the new plumbing and gas inspector, the new electrical inspector, and the four people that were brought into the department to work on the rental unit inspection program. The rental unit inspection program, we started in September, so there was a transfer of funds from the expense side when we terminated our contract with the vendor to cover that. But moving forward with this new year, new budget, it'll be reflected on the payroll side.
Thank you, Mike. You also have $250,000 for outside community media and another $20,000 for advertising. Can you explain all these expenses? Have we paid money to provide promotion or whatever?
Yes. So these line items have been around a lot longer than I have. The outside communication is our telephone bill. We pay the telephone bill for the city, not the school department, but for City Hall and some of the other departments. The advertising, the advertising for the planning board and for other boards that, where we don't charge. Planning board and the zoning board appeals, they pay for their ads. But there's advertising that has to be done that may not cover the cost of the ads. And for anything else that we need to, our communications, if we're going to place an ad, print some flyers to try to get the word out on some new services.
Thank you, Mike. I just want to highlight this, that your road and control has $18,000, and you're advertising as $20,000 budget. You don't have to explain this. We can just brainstorm this for the future budgeting. But last but not the least, I know your department received several vans from ARPA, Senior Center, Health Department. Those are ARPA money. What would be your prolonged, long-term plan in case we run out of money for like maintenance of those vans? What will happen? We run, we will run out of vans? I mean, just like the Lynn Police, they get new police cars. Do you have any projected preparation plan for the future?
Well, we budget replacement equipment. You see in our budget, I believe it's $25,000. So we look at replacing, at this point in time, one vehicle a year if we can. I mean, we'll tend to buy used vans for our maintenance crew and then newer fuel-efficient vehicles off the state contract for our inspectors. The Senior Center has its own budget, which we'll be presenting to you at some point in the evening. So I really can't speak on that. But.
I don't see that under ISD, Mike. It's under the school ISD, though, the vehicle maintenance, unless I missed it.
Yeah, so the city vehicles are maintained through the DPW budget. All city vehicles are maintained through their budget. Because we have vehicles that are attributed directly to the schools for the maintenance and the custodial functions, they're charged on a separate line so that it can be recognized in that school spending and not lost in the big overall city vehicle.
You can still project that for your future plans for future budgeting.
That line item that you're looking at is just for repairs.
My concern is just really to make sure that our seniors will still have those vans 10 years from now.
Yes, you would have to speak to the director of the Senior Center on that.
Or our Health Department.
Yeah, because, well, no, no, the Health Department didn't provide the vans for, the Health Director can talk to you because she's in charge of, she supervises the director of the Senior Center, but they have their own budget. So they would have to present.
The Health Department Director is under your office, right?
She is, yes. But she oversees their operations, but they have a separate budget under the city budget. They're not included in this budget. None of their personnel are in here.
The confusion tonight might be, Mike, that Lisa's going to pinch-hit for Meagan and talk about the council on aging budget.
Right, because there's overlapping.
Because Meagan had a prior commitment, but we can ask Lisa about that, too. But it's really Meagan we should speak with about senior budget.
You're welcome.
Counselor Meany.
How you doing, Mike? I just had a quick question. What does the Wayne Alarm Tower rental do specifically?
So the Wayne Tower, Wayne Alarm Tower rental is where the city maintains its antennas. We have a number of antennas around the city, but the transmitter, the main transmitter is on this tower, police, fire, multiple on each. The school department has their antenna up there. I think there are five antennas. But five antennas, it's down from what it used to be. DPW may be up there, too. So they hold the antennas, they're powered from there, and the city's computers broadcast through that tower.
So the city's been doing this for a long time with the Wayne rental?
I believe since the tower went up, but surely thereafter.
92, maybe, early 90s.
Well, I guess my question is, so what is with the significant increase in costs? It went up over 70% in one year. Like, why?
The lease expired, and honestly, they're the only game in town right now. The city is looking to relocate all of its antennas off of the Wayne Alarm Tower, but that will take time. A study has to be done by the professionals to make sure that, will we propose to put it? We don't have any gaps in coverage so that, you know, a fire truck or a police car is not going to be able to communicate to or from. We're in the process of doing that now. The CFO is spearheading this. There's some locations that have been found that will allow us to take the antennas off of Wayne Alarm and reduce that bill not to zero, but significantly. The same is that we also have a rental with Wayne Alarm, or the fire alarm operators. They are sighted up there, and we're looking for another home for them because they're paying probably the highest square footage rate for rental for that type of usage in the entire country, frankly.
The 911 dispatches that are housed in Wayne Alarm, because the lease expired, and we're paying a premium for those services now. So, got it.
Then one additional question. If you were budgeting additional $1 million, what additional services would you provide the taxpayers?
Well, if you gave me $1 million right now, I'd probably plow it right back into the buildings the city owns. The average age of a city building right now is approaching 85 years. The heating systems in the three high schools, with the exception of Classical, which had its boilers replaced, are 25 years old. It's, we're forever chasing our TL on maintaining what we have without expanding things. A lot of the programs the MSBA runs, you need to be of a certain age in your facility before you can get in. Classical was opened in 99, so the building envelope was completed, and the boilers are probably 98. Needs a new roof, needs new HVAC equipment. English High School was renovated, opened in 1999. The boilers and the equipment, same thing. Tech, the equipment in the classrooms is actually much older than that. Some of its original, the '72. The boilers were replaced in 99. One's inoperable and one's leaking. So we have two and a half boilers on that school. A million dollars doesn't even buy a boiler room. So honestly, these days, any additional funding that we can get, I would direct, asked to be directed into upgrading the facilities that we have. We're just using ARPA money, we're just replacing the air conditioning rooftop units on the police station. They run 24/7, 365 days a year. Units that we're replacing were put in in 2004, station open in 2005. They've been running nonstop for 20 years. Very expensive to maintain equipment like that, and the replacement cost, you can't not replace that because the facility is open. So that would be my honest answer. If you wanted to look at city services, where I would, I would say technology for our operations. City government, unfortunately, in my experience, has never been the leader. The private sector leads in technology. We're always lagging behind. And through the past five to six years, we've increased our technology with our inspectors, we've increased our technology with our maintenance crews in keeping track of what we're doing, how much it costs, and when it was done. So by doing that, we can increase accountability and traceability so that, no, if we made a mistake, where it was made, how it was made, and we can correct it so it doesn't happen again. So it would be technology for the employees of the Inspection Services Department to better perform their job.
Thank you for that answer.
Counselor McLean.
I'm looking at the road and control. Is that citywide road and control, or is that individual residents at $18,000?
That $18,000 is a number that's been in the Inspection Services budget probably since 2005. This funds a program where residents, if they're having a problem in an area, the city will send in an exterminator with an inspector to walk the area. The exterminator will place traps and bait, and the inspector will cite the areas around. So if you have a bad neighbor, it's creating an issue, we'll go out, we'll go to the properties around the bad neighbor, your property, and if you sign a waiver, we'll place a bait box and bait on your property, and we will re-bait. We go out once or twice a week. It's, essentially, we're working on private property with the owner's permission to try to remove a nuisance that a neighbor is causing for the abutting private properties.
Oh, it just seemed like a low number for, so this is a service for the city in general, all the residents?
All the residents.
From this $18,000?
Yes, it is. I mean, we do our own road and control programs for the schools and city buildings under different, just under regular maintenance line items, 2412 or 2412. So you wouldn't see the road and control for city buildings. But that is a specific program that it could be expanded. There's no question it could be expanded, which would mean adding another inspector, because this is a part-time job for the inspector in that they have other duties. And we've done a study, a little pilot program last year in two different wards of the city, using different types of bait, different types of traps. And Lisa Tobin, the Health Director, can talk to you in depth about what the outcome of what it was and where we see successes and failures on this, because the road and control program is essentially baiting, and that's happening after the fact. The problem's already there. The solution to the problem is to getting people stopping the bad behavior that would attract the roads to start with. And Lisa has been working on that with Zosia and the Inspection Division to come up with a better tool. And the tool, we've found, varies depending on what your neighborhood you're in. If you're up in a single-family neighborhood, the tools you use there are much different than if you're into a multifamily neighborhood with absentee landlords, where a lot more aggressive tools need to be used to bring the landlords to maintain their property versus a homeowner who wants to maintain his property. So yes, it could be increased. That is the cost of the exterminator. But the more we would increase it, the more reliance on the city side. So it would increase the need for the city to have more inspector time on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Matul.
I was told that the road and control program was only for single-family homes. Is that true? Because now you're saying it's citywide.
It's citywide. One and two, well, not just single-family, one and two family homes.
One and two.
We won't, we're not going to go to commercial, three-family or lodges, a commercial building generally run for profit. So we don't go to all of them, but there are significant amount of city, it's wherever these one and twos are in the city. So when I said citywide, I meant the program is citywide. Yeah, but it's residential.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Counselor Field.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Lepia. Thank you, Mike. There was a program back, I don't know if it was run through ISD or through DPW, of kind of a recycle coordinator or trash coordinator. He went around, you know, reminding people, you know, what's allowed in recycle, what's not, kind of looking at trash. That was a pilot program that was funded through a grant. Is anything like that happening or potential to have happen again? Inspections or anything? I know broken lids, you know, people that aren't making phone calls to have them replaced, just overflowing trash barrels, creating more problems because of that?
I don't want to duck a question, but that's Andy, so I'm going to leave that to Commissioner Hall.
All right, but they don't have any enforcement towards overflowing barrels?
No. Well, they do have the enforcement powers. They, under the ordinance, they could write tickets, but that's not what they do, so they don't. And we will write the ticket. So if we get a call, we haven't.
So your inspectors aggressively following that or just responding?
So we have an aggressive program every day looking at dumpsters. Dumpsters are the number one cause of. Dumpsters are the number-one cause of problems in the city, not so much the toters. Yes, there are problems with toters, there's no question, they're overfilled every day. But the dumpsters at commercial buildings, apartment buildings especially, we have a list of all the dumpsters, they're supposed to be registered and have a license, and we do inspections on them every single day, and we cite them, we'll work with the landlord, if need be, to move the dumpster, or we'll require them, I'll call them in front of the board of health if they don't comply, fencing, move the dumpster, and do, mostly it's maintenance and increased pickups that would help the city. Landlords, like a lot of people, don't want to spend money. They'll pick it up once or twice a week when it should be picked up three or four times a week, leading to the overflows. In regards, we used to have, we had a larger staff of health inspectors, and we used to do trash patrols, we'd send an inspector out on trash day to ride in front of the trash trucks, and then they would just write tickets. We don't do that anymore. We had three gentlemen retire at one point during the pandemic, and we stopped doing that. Our focus now is on dumpsters and the apartments and the apartment buildings, because it's, I can almost guarantee that after certain holidays, every single toter in the city is overpacked and it's overflowed, guaranteed. And unless a problem becomes egregious, that it's on the ground or something, and the neighbors complain, it's almost impossible to look at this many properties, even using one person a day to follow the pickups. There's five different days, five different pickup schedules, and thirty-two thousand units in the city, they're not all picked up, I know they're, a lot of them are commercial, but we would need at least two people running around to handle that on a proactive fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Commissioner Donovan? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. We're going to just go as a way of housekeeping, I would like to move to personnel, because Drew Russo is not here, he had a prior commitment, but our clerk has a letter to read from the personnel department, which I'll have her do, and then we'll go right to Clerk Rowe, because the city clerk department will take that out of order for her. Thank you. Clerk Rowe.
Dear Chairman Lapierre and members of the Budget Committee, thank you for allowing me to submit this letter in lieu of testimony, as I had a prior commitment on the date of this hearing. Personnel Department requests full funding of the FY 2025 budget as presented by Mayor Nicholson. We believe it is sufficient to meet our department needs and provide a variety of services for our dedicated team of city employees. One major change from the FY 24 budget is an increase in the outside professional technical line item, which represents a transfer from the treasure collector budget for the purpose of paying administrative fees to the city's service provider for employee flexible spending accounts. I am proud of the work we have done to expand the diverse pool of applicants for city positions, streamline the employee onboarding process, make our hiring processes more accessible by advertising on multiple platforms and in several languages, and we provide continuing education opportunities for staff, including a three-part course on enhancing administrative skills for frontline staff, and our upcoming series of workshops on conflict resolution in the workplace. We have a tremendous team of personnel, and I'd like to close by showing appreciation to Maria Bray, Allison Hart, Nancy DeJoy, and Iris Martinez for the dedication and commitment they show on a daily basis. They are just a few of the many outstanding people who serve the citizens of Lynn and whom the Personnel Department serves in turn. Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions, and thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Sincerely, Drew Russo, Personnel Director.
Okay, we'll accept that for the files. Motion to do so?
Motion.
Motion made. Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now we'll go right to the city clerk. Your budget, Madam Clerk.
I'm probably going to be the shortest person here tonight.
That's okay. You're pretty tall in my estimation.
The city clerk and election office budgets are level-funded. Although we remain understaffed due to the changes made at the state level with the Votes Act, we will continue to provide the best level of service to the citizens of Lynn. Anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Clerk Rowe. Any questions for Ms.?
Well, he's got a question.
Question, Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Clerk. How much more is your budget impacted during national elections compared to local and state as far as funding?
For funding? We were funded a little bit more for the federal election. It's more than double for the federal election, and the state now, because of early voting and mail-in voting and extra people that we have to hire to do that work. That's why I say it's because of the Votes Act. It went like from approximately forty thousand for an election up to sixty, and now it's up to a hundred for a federal election.
That falls onto the city as far as the financing?
So it falls onto the city, and then just our regular budget, and then anything that we overflow, the state does reimburse us now, which they have done the last couple of years through this nine F fund that we have, and they reimburse you some polling hours, not a lot, but enough, so that we, any overflow, we can take from that account so that we don't have to burden the city with that right now.
So there's no formula, like for ISD, for example, when they're repairing a school, doing a school project, it's eighty percent reimbursement, or school funding?
Well, there is a formula that we have to fill out with the state to certify the poll working hours, and it's, you know, they, like I said, they only allow so many poll workers that we can use, postage that we have to spend, overtime hours, you know, and like I said, then it's only percentage of that, so.
But it's not a hundred percent?
Oh, no, no, no.
Thank you.
No, and the state legislature, they're constantly fighting to get that, to get that hundred percent that we need, because it's burdening the cities tremendously with the early voting and the mail-in voting.
It's not consistent, year to year, either, budgeting that?
I am on a first-name basis with Brendan and, you know, Dan, and yes.
Exactly, the delegation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clerk Rowe? So there will be early voting for the presidential and the primary September?
Two weeks of early voting in November, one week in August, and then, of course, mail-in voting, yeah.
For the state ballots, for the city.
For both.
City for early vote, okay. Mail away and in-office hours as well.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You were relieved. Thank you. Terry, you're taking over.
I am.
You're in the hot seat. You're in the big chair now. All right, we're moving right on to Commissioner Hall. Andy, welcome, Department of Public Works. We're on page two, folks, thank you for your patience, we're going to move right along. Got a lot of interesting questions.
Thank you, Chairperson Lapierre and members of the Budget Committee. Andrew Hall, representing the Department of Public Works. I'd like to thank Mayor Nicholson and his team, and CFO Bertino and his staff preparing this balanced budget, sixteen point five four million of which is to fund the Department of Public Works. The biggest change with my department is the switch to a new curbside trash and recycling vendor. For your average resident, there'll be, that'll be a seamless transition. One thing that will change is the rental of additional barrels is now going to be taken care of by the city, which will be a new revenue stream for us, and that would be the only thing that a resident, that would be the only impact to a resident, it's a new person that you're paying for the extra barrels through. I'd like to thank the hard-working men and women of the Department of Public Works for all that they do, keeping our roads and sidewalks repaired, and our parks and public places clear of litter. And that's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Excellent. I'm anticipating we do, but I don't know that for sure. Any questions for Commissioner Hall? Yeah. Counsel Hogan, I knew we'd have at least one.
With Waste Management leaving, did we find out yet if we're going to take the barrels from Waste Management, or are we going to get new barrels from Capital?
We're going to take the barrels. We've purchased the barrels, the barrels that are distributed to the residents from Waste Management, and we're going to supplement that. As barrels are replaced, they'll be replaced with the new barrels.
Because Counsel Net's not here, so the colors are going to stay green?
The colors will stay the same, yes. The barrels, the new barrels have the city logo on them versus the Waste Management logo that the current ones have, but aside from that, there'll be no difference.
All right, great, and there's no additional cost onto the residents?
That's correct.
Very good. And just on that note, will there be an affiction of a sticker or something capital over the WM, or is that like?
It's to be determined.
Something of that nature?
That's to be determined.
The city will own the barrels, sorry, just a point of.
I understand that, but the existing WM?
Your average resident will put the barrel out, and it'll get collected. It's going to be a different color truck, but that shouldn't make any.
So it don't come under any naming rights or infringement upon that company that we still advertise their brand? That's my issue.
To be determined.
To be determined. By July one, it's going to be determined, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you. Counsel Meany.
Andy, I'd just like to ask you the same question I asked ISD. If you were given an additional million dollars in funding, what additional services would you provide to the taxpayers?
I'd buy three heavy plow trucks, and that one million dollars wouldn't even cover it.
What does a plow truck go for?
Three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per. As Chief Sullivan has mentioned, the challenges with purchasing new vehicles is crazy. I ordered three new trucks twenty-three months ago, and the vendor, about a month ago, the vendor told me, oh, by the way, truck number three, we can't provide it for you. We went to a different vendor, the new price was a hundred thousand dollars more. So it's super frustrating, and, you know, it's waiting for these vehicles is painful.
Counsel McLean.
I just want to know what vacancies you have in your department, like, jobs are open?
I have two mechanic vacancies currently, and I have one, we're going to hire a person to maintain the trash barrels, so three.
Counsel Allenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mike. Andy, how are you? The reason why I said Mike, because I asked Mike a while ago about the question about outside community and media, and that was twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand or something, right? And I see that amount here in your, under your line item, and it's one thousand dollars. Do you have the same explanation as Mike has, why it's listed here and why it's very small amount?
Which item are you referring to?
Outside community and media. It's three, four, zero, zero, page, page one-ten. You don't have to answer that, Mike, you can just tell me later as well, but it's just, it's just confusing to a layman's eyes like me to see the same name, but different, total different amount of number, it's not even very close. So I just want to know if you have the same explanation as what our ISD chief is saying. And also, in that line item, there's seventy-five thousand for aquatic weed control. Can you explain what is aquatic weed control?
We do weed treatments on the ponds to control aquatic vegetation.
Oh, so that's, that's, because I have one for Goldfish pond, so this will fall under this line item then?
That's correct, yep.
Annually, or you do it?
Right.
Annually, I believe, flaxlease?
Yes, very detailed, I actually appreciate it so much. Last but not the least, and I know I was talking with Counselor Matul about this, can you explain to us the process of if National Grid will start making constructions everywhere in our streets, and then they try to fix it, but they're doing a very sloppy job by just putting, just covering the spot where, is there a way the city could say, or your office could say, can you just, since you've put like twenty holes there, can you just pave the whole thing, not put like a crossword puzzle that you have to connect the dot, which is really ridiculous to see, and it's not?
I agree with you one hundred percent, and it's a tricky, it's a tricky balance, because that, you know, that's not magic, that money, that money comes from the ratepayers for the gas company. So we, when the gas company opens a street, they follow our street opening permit manual, and depending on the percentage of the street that's disturbed, that kind of dictates the percentage of area, as well as how recently the street was paved, that kind of dictates their restoration efforts. I mean, I can tell, when the gas company applies for a permit, I can say pave the whole street, which I recently did with Harris Road, and they said, no, thank you, we're going to hold off.
So there's, so we will be expecting the similar approach by next year or a few years?
Right, so, you know, I'm not quite sure what on Harris Road, you know, obviously it wasn't a safety issue, or they would have done it, but those are the kinds of decisions that have to be made when, you know, it adds a huge cost. The cost of the restoration is more than the cost of the pipe.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take this opportunity, I know we, I just asked my husband to bring me some coffee.
You have the floor, Counsel.
But I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to you and your team. My question to you last year was totally different from what my question's now. You did a lot of, a lot of good approaches and good developments this year, so I want to say thank you to you and your team, and Lisa especially, who will answer our calls in the middle of the night, which is unprecedented, and I just want you to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Allenson. Counsel Field.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick point of information, the barrels currently are owned by Waste Management, that's why they're advertised as Waste Management, and as Mike said, TBD. If the city's purchasing the barrels, it wouldn't have Capital Waste logo particularly, because the city would now own the barrels and not Capital Waste, so that's still TBD, correct, because of that reason?
The new, the new barrels, the new barrels, there's no mention of Capital Waste on the new barrels. The new barrels belong to the city, and they have the city seal on them, same as behind Counsel Lapierre.
The new, yeah.
The new, old barrels.
The new, old barrels. Mike, one question I have, well, I have before, a few years back, this council worked closely with Mayor, then Mayor McGee, on funding an additional person in the DPW to focus on litter, because that was needed. That position's not vacant, correct? Or is it, is it vacant? When Counselor McLean just asked what positions are vacant, is that position that was funded particularly for litter in the city, is that position currently vacant or not?
It is not.
Okay, it's filled. And what are the roles of that person as focusing on litter?
It's a, it's a body that rides in the back of a trash truck and empty barrel, empties barrels every day of the week.
Okay, so was there somebody on the back of the trash truck emptying barrels prior to funding that particular position?
There was, but there is one additional after that funding.
So it's a second person to help empty barrels?
That's correct, yep.
And that's all they do, is empty barrels?
Um.
So it was just, so just to clarify, there was only one person on the trash truck prior to funding that position, correct?
The trash truck has two people that go on it typically.
Did it have two people before we funded that position?
It did, but now there's a third. We don't have three on the trash truck, but we have more in rotation.
Okay. And is there somebody particularly focused just on litter, not just collecting barrels?
Um.
Currently?
He's focused on litter by emptying barrels, but he's not walking around picking up litter.
Thank you.
That would be wonderful, if I could have that.
Add on to that, there was, some years ago, I think what Counsel Field is referencing, we actually went out and bought a, I don't know what you would call it, but it was for the nooks and crannies of the downtown, if you will, maybe like a vacuum system, and I know that didn't work out for whatever reason. That person was going to be designated as the litter patrol person, I think was my recollection, I'm going back probably five years, and there, and we hired a person. So that has not been, that has not taken the form, what you're saying, that line item is not how this council may have envisioned that position from five years ago. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there any incentive or emphasis to bring something, someone like that into your mix again to help with the litter aspect, not the trash aspect, so to speak?
I mean, that would be wonderful, but we're working with, within the financial constraints that the city faces currently.
Do you have summer crews out doing that this summer with youth?
Yes, we do, yep.
And anytime you partner up with Essex County, I think the Sheriff's Department, is that also a priority throughout the year?
That's correct, yep, and we also use Roka, the software called Roka.
Yep. Yeah, what happened to that machine, though, that we bought?
We still have it.
Okay. It's kind of new still, just not used, right? Okay.
I got one more.
Whoop, hands went up. Let's go ladies first, right? Counsel Maggie Madry, and we'll work our way.
Awesome, thank you. Just a follow-up about the new trash barrels, can you confirm they are the same exact size?
Yes, I can.
That we currently have?
They're the same exact size.
And the price to rent the additional barrel is what? And the price to rent the additional barrel is what?
A hundred and thirty-six a year? It's going to be the same as it is currently.
Okay, and what if somebody rented a barrel from Waste Management, like, a couple months ago or recently, and then July 1 comes, will they, will you honor that? Or will they have to now pay, because they didn't get the whole year?
We, we're going to, that, that's kind of the devil's in the details. So right now, we're working on a mailing that's going out to the roughly two thousand customers of these extra barrels. And the thinking is that Waste Management would rebate them for the eleven months that they did not have the service through Waste Management. This is assuming that your example rented it for the last month. And then they would have to pay the additional eleven months to the city at the same rate. So it's a little bit of a bookkeeping headache for the resident, but that's, that's where we are right now.
So you prorate the Waste Management credit, and then it would be debited on the city for those eleven months?
Right, the rate hasn't raised, the rate, the rate of the barrel rental hasn't changed. So if it was a hundred and thirty-six prior, it's going to be a hundred and thirty-six in fiscal twenty-five. But portion, like, a fraction of that will have been paid to Waste Management, and the balance will have to be, have to be paid to the city.
That is going to be a nightmare to...
It's going to be, it's going to be a bit tricky...
Initially.
As we, as we kick off, but...
First year.
We are hopeful, we've, we've put a lot of work into the systems that we're using to track these new barrels, and bear with us.
Be some growing pains in early July, just folks learning the roots, I mean, the new folks that are going to be...
Yeah, change is difficult, you know, change is difficult. Our current vendor has been with us for, I want to say thirty years. I've lived in Lynn since nineteen ninety-six, and it's been Waste Management.
Yep.
And they're...
Prior to that, it was probably Public Services, right?
I, I, I don't know when the last time the city picked up barrels. It was a while ago, though.
Years ago, yeah.
So, so change is hard, and, but that's what we need to do to stay afloat financially.
Yep.
Thank you, and just one more question, because you mentioned the tracking part, so each barrel will have a number on them, and you will be able to track, like, so let's say your barrel ends up in your neighbor's yard, will you be able to track them by the numbers?
We not track them so much as we know which number went to which house.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But it's, it is smart to put your address on your barrel. So if there's a windstorm or...
Great, thank you.
The barrels get mixed up on trash, yeah, there's lots of barrels out there. So people tend to be possessive of them, they clean them, or, you know, some people do, some people do not, but...
Well, it's a transient city, you move and you close on one day, and your neighbor's trying to steal your barrel or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it, it makes life easier if you put your address on it.
Label, label everything.
But to answer your question, yes, we keep records of which house has which barrel.
Thank you.
Council Mathieu.
I also want to thank you and Lisa and Eric for all the help that you've done for us. I know we just got out of winter, and nobody wants to hear snow right now, but it's never too early or too late to talk about snow in New England. With that said, you said that you ordered three new trucks, and I know last year, we had, last winter, there were a couple instances where we had, if I'm not wrong, less than twelve trucks on the streets for the whole city. So I guess I have two questions. The first one is, do you have a plan going into the fall or early, very early winter, to, to, to maintain or do any maintenance works on any, on any of the trucks that we have right now, so that we, so that we are prepared for, for winter? Because we, clearly, we don't know how much snow we're going to get, but at the same time, we don't want to, we don't want the snow to surprise us.
Absolutely. To answer your question, we haven't started our, we probably have monthly meetings starting in the end of July, to talk about the snow plowing plan. And so, so those haven't started for fiscal twenty-five yet, but they will shortly. And as far as maintenance on the trucks, that's always a concern of ours, and we will be in better shape this winter than we were last winter.
Another thing that I would like to comment on is, and this, and that has nothing on your reflection or DPW's reflection, but last year I attended the, I attended the meeting, I attended the meeting, or that you had with all the snowplowers, which was very poorly attended for whatever reason, not, like I said, not a reflection of your work. But I would like to, to ask that you guys do that again, and find a way so that we can get more people to, to attend that meeting. After the meeting, after, after you had your presentation, I had some of the plowers come up to me, and that they had a lot of questions, but they didn't understand what was really happening, because they, they didn't, they didn't speak English. So maybe we can do that meeting very early, and have any, maybe have, I know, I know the mayor's office has the, the translation department, maybe we can get them involved. I just would like to see a little more training. I did ask some of them what sort of training they got, and they said none. Now, that could have been from, from the contractor itself, not necessarily from the DPW, but more if, if it's a contractor that the DPW hired, whoever that lead supervisor of the contractor is, should be training their plowers. Because I know you hire ex-contractor, and they get all the drivers to come in. So I think maybe if, if you can oversee or supervise some sort of better training or better explanation to what the, the plower should really be doing. I know it may feel like it's really early to, for me to bring this up right now, but I think it's the right time. And one more thing, if we do have that meeting, I would like to ask that us as counselors get the, the opportunity to speak in that meeting. I know, I know that it's all DPW, but we are the ones who are on the road. Like, it was my first time as a counselor during the first snowstorm that we had, but I was driving around, and I saw a lot of constituents say, hey, listen, if we could do this little thing, it would have solved forty percent of our calls. So I think us as counselors, as wired counselors who are out there, we should also have a little bit of input, if possible.
Absolutely, that's possible, and you've made some great points. The, the problem with having the meeting, like, it's a balance. The earlier you have the meeting, the less the people will be thinking of snow. So, so when you have that meeting is, like, if you had the snow meeting in August, I think if you were complaining, not complaining, if you were commenting on the poor attendance in the meeting that we had late November, if you have that same meeting in August, it's going to be worse. That, that's, that's an assumption of mine, but, so, so we'll have to, we'll have to think about that, how we're going to do that. And certainly the translation, that's, that's with the mayor's new translation staff, that's, that's an easy, easy fix.
And a lot of it's like crossing gods, you need them, you don't, you're not fully staffed in August at all yet, so it really takes time to build up to the, we never get to full staff, I don't believe.
No, and they, you know, the, a lot of these, the insurance is expensive, the insurance that we require. And a lot of these contractors wait till the last minute to get the insurance, because it's expensive, you know, they wait till there's a forecast snowstorm, and then they show up out of the woodwork.
And they're also hustling in other communities, I imagine, they don't just...
Right, and, and to combat that, we have, we've implemented a bonus regiment that rewards people for signing up early. Like, you don't get the bonus if you don't sign up by a certain date.
Maybe, Andy, you could consider paying them for the hour they're at the old time or whatever that evening, is to get the hourly rate, one hour or something.
That's something we can consider as well. Yep, yep, that would, that would work.
I'm sure they have a better attendance. Council Hogan?
Yes, I got two things. I got one that just came off the press here. One question is, can we have more recycling pickups during the holiday season, like, after Christmas? That's, that's been a lot of...
Regretfully, no.
No way, huh?
Well, not no way, but, you know, the trash, if you look at the budget, right, the trash has gone up seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars from last year. We're really not in a position to offer, offer more services. There was talk of a recycling dumpster at DPW, where residents could drop off boxes and that sort of stuff.
Why can't we do that? Is that a no-to?
It's something I'll have to look into.
Well, that's an idea right there, because, because during those times, people's trash and recycling is just over, overfilling.
Right.
So then, they're putting boxes in their trash, and now their trash bags are underground where the rodents are everywhere, so...
Right, and the boxes shouldn't be in the trash to begin with.
Right, well, when they don't have any room, that's what's happening, so that's...
Understood.
All right, my second thing...
And I'm not trying to be flip by saying, no, we can't...
You're pretty blunt there.
Box cutters, they got to cut up the cardboard.
But another thing is, the process to adopt an island, I did talk to Lisa about this a little while ago, I got a company that wants to do the one over by DP, where DAV was on Summer Street, it's a pretty big island.
Okay.
What, what is the process for that? If anyone's watching tonight, any businesses that might want to adopt islands, what is the process?
Send me an email at ahall@lynnma.gov. It's on the city website.
So you don't have a process for that?
What's that?
You don't have a process for that? You can't say it on TV?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to figure out who the contractor is, and which island they're willing to take on, each island costs, you know, depending on the size.
So there's a charge, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, there's a charge to the, to the business that wants to adopt it.
Oh, yes.
All right, so this, this business is veering, next door neighbor over there on Commercial Street. They're going to adopt an island, and they'll have our guys pick it up. We'll pick up the trash on our rounds through the city.
Oh, excellent.
We'll pick up the trash, they'll pay you guys to hire a contractor to cut the grass.
Okay.
And in the future, we'll, we'll probably eventually take over cutting the grass.
Oh, that's great, I look forward to partnering with them.
All right, so I just want to put that out there, to other businesses that might want to do this, and they can call DPW just to help us out with other islands like this one here, because that's a pretty big one, that, that is a mess all the time, so it's, it's always a problem in Ward Six, so...
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Certainly.
If you don't mind, just on what he said. So I've had a, a lot of landscapers reach out specifically about that, and I did reach out to Lisa a couple, I think it was like a year and a half ago. So I know that you got a charge, because you got to hire a contractor to, to maintain it. What if it's a landscaper that can maintain the island themselves?
We do, we do it both ways.
No charge.
So they, they would have a no charge, and they maintain it?
Correct, if they have the resources to maintain it.
Okay.
And that they were keeping up with it, right?
That's good to know.
And Council Field, also, Council Mathieu? Council Hogan? Over to Council Field.
Thank you, I just have a question to go on that, just for clarification. Is it only the DPW that oversees the islands, or is community development too? Because I, I always understood it as community development.
We partner with them for the sponsors, we work in conjunction with them, with the sponsors.
All right. Excellent. Any other questions for Commissioner Hall? Seeing none? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you. Could we have Habermaster, Mr. Perry come up, Jim? Good evening, welcome. Moving right along.
Evening, councilors.
Evening, Jim.
The budget for the Habermaster hasn't changed in some thirty-five years.
That's right.
We get by on volunteers and donated services from the, the two ER clubs, which probably totaled around seventy-five hundred a year. The boats are older, they need to be maintained, and the, the clubs help us tremendously with that. One boat is, was turned over to us in nineteen seventy-four from the Department of Civil Defense, and the other boat, the other boat we bought new in nineteen eighty-nine for sixty thousand dollars. Needs to be replaced, but we're getting, we're getting along with it. The same boat today is probably three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So again, we're getting along, we're ready to respond in marine emergencies, we have some firefighting equipment, but that's all, that's all there is. If I can answer any questions, please.
Thank you, Jim, thank you. Any questions for our Habermaster? Thank you for your excellent work over the years, Jim.
Thank you, appreciate it, all you guys do.
Thank you. Pleasure. All right, Parking Department Director Jessica Chapini. Jessica, welcome, good evening.
Good afternoon, Jessica Chapini for Lynn Parking. The Parking Department manages curbside spaces in the city lots while enforcing the city's parking rules and regulation, regulations, sorry. Our budget will focus on repairing, updating, and maintaining existing equipment and vehicles, and reforming and implementing department policies such as the famous digital permitting system, and transformation of bilingual signage, while moving forward to a paperless department. I'd like to thank Mike Bertino, Steven Spencer, and Tim Lennon for helping me understand and prepare my budget, and ask that you consider the Parking Department when given Tim Lennon money to get me a color copier.
Ha, you're the color copy...
Yes.
Okay.
I think ISD is sick of me. That being said, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, and welcome, I know it's your first budget hearing. Yes, let's go Council Hogan, then move over to Council Field. Council Hogan?
Since you came on as the Parking Director, I know there's a lot of broken parking meters throughout the city. What, what's the percentage that are up and functionally working now?
So when I first came on, we had about, we have about a hundred and fifty of them, and just under fifty were working. We currently have all a hundred and fifty working, and I'm looking to request and push towards getting two hundred, and I think the parking study, when those recommendations come forward, they'll help me prove that that's needed.
And one more question, your staff, how, how big is your staff now?
So right now, I have eight enforcement officers between three shifts, the first shifts, the first shift is eight to four, then I have a four to twelve that has only two enforcement officers, and then at overnight shift, that's midnight to eight in the morning, and that too only has two enforcement officers.
I will, I will say one thing, that from my constituents, now seeing parking in their neighborhoods all hours, I get positive, positive reinforcement back that they're happy to see that cars blocking their driveways, now there's enforcement agents, non-residents parking in their area, there's, there's enforcement agents, commercial vehicles parking now, so I get a lot of, a lot of comments about that there, and they're really, really happy with what's going on with our Parking Department. And I just want to thank you and your staff for doing what you guys are doing, and keep it up. And I think one of your favorite people in this whole city is Mike Bertino, because you are bringing in some dough, so, thank you.
Yes, good revenue. Council Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Parking Department Chair, Commissioner answered the questions as far as timing. I just also want to echo Council Hogan's comments that, you know, it's not an easy role, probably one of the hard, most, most difficult roles in the city is the Commissioner for Parking. So I commend you for the hard work that you've done during the transition. And just a point of information, that the request for a color copier, this body can support the request, but we can't increase the budget. That has to go to Mr. Tebow, through Mr. the Chief of Staff, to the mayor's office to increase the budget, but we would certainly stand by you for that request.
Thank you.
Any other, Council Allenson?
Hi, Jess.
Hi, Coco.
I was smiling, because probably you're one of the few people, City Hall, that we always call all the time.
That's okay.
I would like to say thank you, even three hours, and, you know, my colleagues could, Tess could say thank you as well, because you're very efficient with all of our calls, and you update us, and it's a breath of fresh air, knowing that we're not the one to keep calling any of our staff at City Hall, so thank you, I just want you to know that. Do you have an estimate amount of your office, your office, you've raised tickets, you have like a figure, ballpark figure, of how much you raised in the whole year of, of twenty, let's put it?
I don't, but I'll look at Bertino to say if I'm right in saying this estimate, but I think that we've doubled since I've come on.
So what figure is the double?
As a revenue stream are you talking about, Council? Overall, what's come in?
Yeah, I just want to know if, because of, we, we did some, if we will justify some of the...
Revamped it, we revamped it.
So I can...
More staff, we had to get more vehicles, the new system that we...
I don't have that exact figure, but I can get that to you.
All right, thank you. Rather than that, I have no more questions.
Got you, thank you. Yes, Councilor Maggie Madry.
Thank you, Chairman. I also would like to echo what my counselors have also said. Jessica, you've always been very like, always answer the phone when I call, or text. Jessica, you've always been very like, always answer the phone when I call or text or email. And I just really appreciate that. And I just wanted to let you know that you're appreciated.
Thank you.
Council Matul.
Thank you, Jessica. Same thing. One of the things I would like to highlight, if, uh, anybody doesn't know that Jessica has done throughout the city, is to put, uh, a lot of the flyers and warnings in Spanish. And I think they're got, that now you're gonna be doing it in different languages too. So I did get some feedback from a couple of, uh, my customers who are business owners downtown that a lot of their customers now know that they have to pay. Whereas before, they, the only way they knew that they couldn't park there was when they came back and they had the ticket. But now they actually see it in the language that they can understand. So thank you for that, too.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments, questions, accolades? I'll go on the record, say you're doing a great job as well. I don't wanna be left out. Keep up the good work this summer. And I'm glad the rollout of the, uh, the registry of resident parking only had its moments in the beginning in January. But I think through your diligence and your staff and educating people, um, the bumps have really smoothed out now as we enter whatever it is, six months now into this new program. Cause change is difficult for all of us at times. So I really commend you for, um, your fortuitousness and sticking with it and being available during those bumps in the road, so.
Thank you. We have about 1,500, just over 1,500 residents, um, all registered.
And that's only for streets, let's clarify, that have a resident parking permit that they must register for themselves, their street address. And if they have guests that come on, uh, long-term and so forth, to reserve their spot. But most of our streets are not resident parking only. It's just in neighborhoods, certain neighborhoods that have been designated over time as resident parking permit. They must register in the new city's, uh, parking system, so. PSA. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving right along with, um, I'm gonna call Mike Bertino up again. He's pinch hitting for Megan Simpson Best. Uh, Director Valda Services had a prior appointment. So Mike, uh, in terms of council on aging.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President. Generally, the council on aging budget is made up of two funding sources. A general fund appropriation and their formula grant. The formula grant is based on the number of seniors in the community and is a reoccurring, um, grant that we get from the state every year. As far as the general fund, the general fund covers the cost of the senior sitter, senior center director, excuse me, the program manager, the outreach coordinator, and a head clerk. The formula covers the driver, the kitchen coordinator, and the support specialist. There's additional funds within, um, the technology grant and the formula grant that help pay for their activities, for fuel for the vehicles that pick up the seniors, um, and certain amount of trips. They do have, um, a little bit of a surplus from prior years. So they should be able to, as long as they're comfortable with it, incorporating whatever programs they need now into their budget. And we will help support them and make it, you know, um, much more oriented to participation for the seniors. So overall, they, we have no worries about their budget. It's, you know, we've, we've been in the building about a little over a year. You know, they're gonna grow and they're gonna keep growing and find out what else they need and we're there to support it. Um, we're starting that renovation, you know, later on this year that will, you know, um, improve the quality down there, add some space, and also add some exits as well. So, but for the most part, um, they, they get what they need through those two funding sources.
Great. Excellent. Questions for Mike on the council of aging. Uh, Council McLean.
I just have one question. Has the city ever considered, um, like a specific city transportation type of thing? Like I've, I've heard from some, eh, some, um, elderly that they can't get to the senior center because of where they're located, like, you know, people in Kings Lynn and places like that. So has there ever been any talk of like a city, like specific, like a Lynn bus or a Lynn transportation type of thing?
Well, we, we do have a new.
Around Lynn?
We do have a new senior van. There was, just like they were talking about vehicles for the fire trucks on delay. It was very difficult, but we put money in for them to get a new senior center van. So they have several different vehicles. I would just have them reach out because they do, um, go out there.
They do go to the, out to the.
Yes. There's, there's no reason why they shouldn't. As long as they communicate and they're, you know, it might not be every day, but it might be two or three days a week that they go by there. But I'm sure if they send an email to the director, they can incorporate it into the route.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think they have to register as a senior citizen and get their, you know, cause they check in and so forth, get their address and all the paperwork. But they should be able to coordinate transportation for any resident who wants to go down and visit. Any other, uh, questions, Mr. Bertino vis a vis Megan? And I know this council's been very active in participating in the senior center, Mike. And, and as you know, we've volunteered and we've gone. And, uh, my parents, for one, are frequent flyers down there. They absolutely love it. Um, and I think it's great that we're investing in our senior population. I mean, they, they're well-fed. I, I, you mentioned meal. They do a breakfast and a lunch.
Yes.
Well, down there. Is that also part of the grant that the?
Uh, the lunch is actually a federal program and it's just a suggested donation.
Right.
Um, but they also do breakfast as well.
They get a ton of food and everyone's well-fed. There's good camaraderie down there. And it's become people's staple, um, that may not have other places to go. So they go daily and they build up that camaraderie. So it's wonderful to see. And, you know, as you mentioned, the expansion of those services over the next year just gonna take it to new heights, I think. So, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Councilor Maggie Madry.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question. Uh, is there any, um, plans for the future to have expanded hours for the senior center or to open on weekends?
I don't know specifically if there are any plans, but as we grow, remember, we own the building now. So it's really on what they think the seniors want. You know, part of it is like we listen to our constituents about snow plowing, about trees. If they want expanded hours and maybe it's expanded hours in the winter or something, I can see them trying that. Cause again, you know, we've come a long way from having no home for the seniors now to own their own place. So I can see them possibly adding, um, some hours, um, in the winter months when people are kinda home, you know, homebound. And that could be something that we could just suggest to them. And maybe they could get a grant and try it out and see if it catches on. But again, when you own your own place, really, sky's the limit as long as we can find the resources and there's a demand for it.
Great. Thank you.
That's great. Anyone else on the council of aging? Council Field.
Thank you. Uh, not a council of aging question, but I didn't want Mike to have to get up again.
Okay.
Um, Mike, can you answer a question? Um, how come community development is not included in the budget content? As far as their department through the city?
Uh, their, but their, their funds don't come from the tax base. Their funds come from the community development block grant.
Okay. Everything that they do within that department falls under that block grant, correct? Or no?
Correct.
Okay.
Or donations or grants they may get, but they don't get, um, anything from the tax base.
That's federal, federal or state grants.
I just wanna know. I knew EDIC was, I didn't, I wanted to clarify that everything.
No, it's a good clarification.
Development was too.
For the general public too. That's good to know. Anyone, anything else on this line item or Mike in general? He's been up here a bunch. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving right along now, uh, to our Veterans Director, Mike Sweeney. Mike, coming off the heels of a very successful Memorial Day weekend. Give you and your staff and the Veterans Council a lot of credit for putting everything on that you did.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I, um, I should also thank, I mean, I, specifically Debbie Smalling and John Cervantes from my office. But the Veterans Council and everyone who came out and every, I think I saw everybody in this room probably 15 times over that week. So thank you so much for your support. We're here just, uh, to cover down it. Our, our budget is level funded in terms of services and staffing. What we do in our office, uh, as I think we all kind of accept, but when we see it in person, not everyone has done, the war doesn't end when they come home. And our office is a frontline service in that regard. That's what we do. There are a lot of great nonprofits in the world. There are a lot of great people out there doing work, volunteering. But at, at some level, fundamentally, taking care of veterans is a government responsibility. That's what we do. That's why we're here. Um, our budget is predominant, if you look at it, it's about 70% of it is Chapter 115, which is a state. It's a program that only exists in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's, uh, named after the Mass General Law under which it's, uh, it comes under. It's a needs-based program for our veterans and our families. Uh, last year, we spent, uh, we, we, uh, gave direct aid to, in the, in the number of almost 518,000 dollars. That's reimbursed at 75% uh, from the Commonwealth the following year. If you look at our budget, uh, our personnel is about less than about 27% of our budget and then a whopping 2% for everything else. So that's our services, our, our, our events. And that's why we, we lean so heavily and try to leverage our relationships with the Lynn Veterans Council, uh, other community groups and, um, things in that regard. What we're seeing, uh, across the board, uh, this year was very, was very good. Uh, we were thankful we were able to, uh, fill a position in our office, uh, for someone to do just VA claims. That really is, uh, the, an incredible, incredibly important, um, amount of work. When people talk about VA claims, sometimes they don't understand what a VA disability rating is. It's a lot of case management. It's a lot of sitting down with that veteran, building trust so they know what they're eligible for. And frankly, it is not a one-off deal. And I, I think we're getting in, not that, uh, online isn't great, but some of these things just can't be done on a website or not done as effectively. And we pride ourselves in that. This year alone, uh, the VA every year comes up with a number of VA disability payments that are paid by zip code. So the city of Lynn, ours went from in V, in, uh, 2022, 950,000 to, uh, 1.1 million, uh, last year. The reason that is. Say those numbers again, Mike. Uh, 1.1 million dollars in disability, VA disability money came to the.
From, from what was the first figure?
Uh, la, uh, 20, uh, 950,000.
950 to 1.1. Got it.
1.1. In the face of changing demographics, our veteran population is getting smaller. And in the face of that, we're seeing that the, the Congress of last year, and I've been saying this sort of like the, uh, it's coming, it's coming. There's something called the PACT Act. The VA, uh, in Congress in 2022, expanded, uh, federal VA benefits for disability ratings. The, the, the biggest, biggest expansion, forgive me, since they added Agent Orange back in, uh, 1990. Every Vietnam veteran might be eligible. Every, I'm an Afghanistan veteran. Everybody who served in the Middle East is now eligible for things that are presumptive. And when I say presumptive, it's similar to how, um, under the state pension system, certain jobs, lung cancer is presumed to be related to the job. The VA handles it the same way. So if you served in, in Vietnam, and I'll say, use this as an opportunity. If you're a Vietnam veteran, boots on ground, and you served in Vietnam and you have diabetes or hypertension, that is service-connected. So when we sit down with that veteran, they come in and they're eligible for hypertension. Well, now, we talk to them, maybe that person has never put in for a PTSD claim. And that's where our work really is, uh, is, uh, we excel. And the last year, uh, our, our clerk that we hired to do VA claims, not only has done VA claims, took, it, he did not start until September, I believe. So just in these, uh, these last three quarters, we, we have about 125 open VA claims. But what we're doing, what we're really excited about is we're migrating that over to a computer system where we've done most of it by paper over the last, you know, we've, we've used the, uh, computer system with the state to sort, to track it. But we're really doing them online. It's made it much more efficient, much better. Um, other than that, the one thing I would say, just wanna give our, sort of our, our highlights that's in the budget that you see, um, sort of engagement highlights, our office this year, 6,000 telephone, uh, between telephone interactions in person, people coming in for appointments, um, we ended up, I think we're up towards about 10,000 engagements with veterans and their families over the last year. And for food insecurity, something I'm very proud of, we, we've, uh, worked with Greater Boston Food Bank and a, uh, local, a statewide nonprofit veterans organization and military family organization to give out, uh, meals to over 700 veterans and their families. And on Thanksgiving, we do a big one. It's called Hero Meals. It's a year-long program. And on Thanksgiving, we give out, uh, gift cards, uh, this year to the tune of $35,000. So I'm really proud of what we've done. We've, uh, again, there's some of our events, Rees Across America. We just, uh, everyone just saw what we did filing, uh, uh, flagging graves. And I would just say, uh, we, we appreciate the support from the council, from the mayor, and from, uh, I think there isn't one department in the city I couldn't thank that we've been having, we've worked with over the last fiscal year. Uh, um, I think if, I think she's still here, like Lisa and Eric is a rock star, for example. Like, things that get done that, that it's really, I think people don't see that connective tissue within the, uh, city and we're proud to be a part of it. But, um, other than, and, um, I would be remiss if I didn't say in that regard to say thank you to the mayor, the council, and the EDIC for really putting them, putting, uh, the Lynn VA clinic first. Thank you very much for that. We had a expansion of that or extension of that at least recently. Um, so with that, are just any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Council McLean.
Um, I do wanna say thank you, Mike. I'm glad to see you collaborating more with the community and, and adding to your services and adding to the enrichment that you're providing for veterans. But I was wondering, um, because we spoke about free cash earlier. Have you ever considered putting a bid in for that to get more outreach done for your, um, department?
I think we, I think we would always, you know, would, everyone would want more staff. I guess that's where I put it there. Really, I think with that, where we are right now, I think we're able to kinda see where that is and engage more. But we really could, the reason we're doing more is because we're able to get that, that, uh, third person in the office filled. So any, anytime there, you really can't substitute, uh, staffing. I'll just say that. But in this, and, and, but in, we're level funded from last year. And I think having that position filled allows us to, to get to where we wanna go in the near term, so.
So you did say the third person is like dedicated to doing, um, intake for your VA claims or Chapter 115 type of things. So you don't have anyone dedicated to outreach and making sure that somewhat, that, you know, veterans are getting the information that they need about their, uh, benefits and about the activities that are going on in the city.
That's a fair point. So we have, so Debbie's, Debbie does Chapter 115 or, uh, we have two people. One dedicated to Chapter 115, one, they, they cover down on some individual stuff, but primarily each one has an area of responsibility on the benefit side of the house. But by having that, it allows me to get out and do a lot of that outreach that I haven't been able to do in the last few years when we've been sort of struggling in the staffing end of it. But I do, but we do not have an outreach person dedicated. That is true.
Okay. So that's, that was my thing. Maybe you could, um, request some of that. Well, not for the, not for the payment of this person, but for an increased line item on media, community outreach, communications, like, things like that.
Excellent. Um, anyone else, councilors? I just wanna say kudos on the Clock Pack rededication to campus, Bradley Campus.
And I should say, to be, to be, to be fair, uh, the, the leader, the leader on that charge was a, it's a retired police, uh, Lynn police officer named Charlie Griffin, who knew him as a young man. And, uh, but it's, the Marine Corps League ran with that and we were, but in this, everybody in the city. And I mentioned Lisa and Eric again, but I think three different departments were involved in getting that.
Coordination.
It's really powerful. Thank you.
You wanna plug the Veterans 2026? You'll probably have time next.
Yeah, uh, in 2026, the, uh, there'll be, the Veterans Council, uh, is, uh, going to be, we're all working together to do a big parade, like the one we did, uh, the one that down West in Ave a few years ago. Um, actually, while I'm here, I'm missing that meeting they're working on up there. Um, but that's gonna, one of the co, it's, uh, the Lynn Veterans Council, Dave Solomini Senior is a co-chair of it. And in 2026, they're looking to have a big parade, uh, here in Lynn. So look forward to having anyone who wants to volunteer, donate, do whatever. But it's, it really gonna be a great moment for the city, I believe.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. How about, um, Lynn Public Library, uh, Chief Librarian Teresa Hurley? Teresa, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Teresa Hurley. I'm the Director of the Lynn Public Library. Um, our budget this year is level funded. Um, I just wanna, um, go over the criteria of what it takes for a library to be state-certified. Um, first, uh, we have to meet the municipal appropriation requirement, which is a formula set by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Um, and we have to be open a minimum hours, depending on our population. Because our population is so large, we have to be open a minimum of 63 hours per week, six days a week. Um, and that's generally from Labor Day till Memorial Day. It has to be 38 consecutive weeks. And we have to spend a percentage of our budget, um, on materials for patron, uh, patron usage. Um, and our percentage is 12%. So I will say that this budget, we do meet the MAR. Um, and we're currently, um, meeting the hours requirement and material expenditure requirement. requirement. And I would just like to give a little snapshot of some of the services and numbers that we had for the past year. We have 22,528 registered patrons. We've circulated over 60,000 physical items, 25,000 materials in electric format. We've held 472 programs with an attendance of over 7,000. And we have delivered over 500 items to homebound patrons. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Teresa. Any questions for Ms. Hurley? Thank you. We're still in the noble system. That's our borrowing capacity?
Yes.
Yep, good. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, is GAR, our Grand Army of the Republic Hall and Museum. Patty Pendex is going to come up, who's our trustee and chair at the museum. Patty?
Did I miss one?
Did I? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to skip over Aaron. I--
You want to do Aaron first?
Yes.
Do you mind?
I don't mind.
The gentleman will yield. My apologies, Aaron. Our principal planner, Aaron Clausen, is here to give us an update on the budget. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate the head fake. I'm Aaron Clausen, the principal planner for, here to speak with the planning department. Generally speaking, it's a very similar budget that we're presenting to you this year, with very minor adjustments based on expenditures from last year. And it represents the resources that we need to move forward from development of the comprehensive plan, creating a vision for the community with the community towards implementation, and some of the bigger projects that many of you, we've spoken about, including the parking strategy, working closely with Jessica, the mayor's office, and others, and sort of creating a strategy for moving the parking resources forward, and making sure that there's access to the broader community, as we also continue to welcome new development and redevelopment in our downtown. That's an example of an implementation activity identified in the comp plan that seeks to enhance that downtown district, consistent with the broader goals and objectives of that plan. Another example of a project that's just underway, that will take place over the next 12 months, maybe a little bit longer, is a complete reworking of the zoning code, working with the solicitor's office and many other departments within the city to essentially re-clotify that, again, consistent with the land use goals and objectives that were articulated in that plan. So that's a big, it's a big project that we look forward to working with you all more in the future, in the near future, as that starts to unfold. Currently, we're wrapping up the South Harbor Implementation Plan. As you may have noticed, that the draft plan is out for comment. This is also an action item that came out of Vision Lynn, looking at the waterfront in particular as a transformed district. How can the city sort of be very intentional and implementing specific actions, particularly around infrastructure, transportation, transportation infrastructure that supports that transformation, consistent with a number of visioning efforts that took place in downtown. So we hope that project will wrap up, or the planning process will wrap up in the next month or so. But that leads to more action and more items to move forward. So as an example, over the next year, we look to continue planning for and designing a shoreline restoration along the Harbor Park. We do expect that the first phase for the Harbor Park will be completed in 2025, June of next year. But we have more work to do there. We need to make sure that the shoreline's restored and resilient to climate change, make sure that we're building on that effort to create the signature waterfront park that was envisioned for the community. And then the second piece of that is, we were successful in going out and getting a grant through the Federal Department of Transportation, under one of their competitive grant programs called the Reconnecting Communities. And that's going to enable us to do some more planning and design work for a new commuter rail station at River Works that is accessible and open to the broader community, looking at different locations to provide access to that commuter rail station, not just to properties south of the rail line, but also north of the rail line, and making connections, improving connections for, you know, broader Lynn community to get to the waterfront. And that's a project that we hope to begin in the next six months. We're learning as we're getting into that grant program, that there's a fair amount of grant contracting that goes along with that. But that's a big step forward in moving that, that plan, again, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Some other highlights I just want to hit for you all. We spoke a little while back together about the Safety Action Plan. This was an effort to identify and prioritize a number of roadway corridors and intersections that are high-crash locations, based on sort of past, you know, past crash data and federal crash data, but also sort of looking at the conditions, site conditions of our roadways that tend to speak towards crashes, and find ways to implement countermeasures that will not necessarily eliminate crashes. We don't think that's the goal. The goal really is about mitigating crashes that have result in significant harm or death. So that, a key aspect there is to slow traffic down. We just submitted the grant to the Safe Streets for All, it's also a federal transportation, Department of Transportation grant program, for $12 million to implement those countermeasures. And hopefully, we'll be working with you all in the next three or four months to implement those. I'll just note, that was a, that was a really collaborative effort in developing the Safety Action Plan and the grant application itself, working with a number of different departments to sort of allocate and prioritize the kinds of countermeasures and investments that we can make to make the city's street network safer for all users. Earlier, I noticed there was a conversation in Chief Reddy's presentation about, you know, dynamic speed feedback signs, those kinds of tools. That's, that's, that's a line item that we're including in that budget, those kinds of measures that can help support the police department in enforcing and helping slow traffic and make it safer for all users. So just to kind of highlight that point, that all the work we do, generally all the work we do is in close collaboration with other departments. And with that, I'll just yield the floor and answer any questions you might have.
Yes, questions. Counselor Allenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I could genuinely say that this is one of my favorite departments. I'm not saying my favorite, one of my, for the fact, the reason that you guys are very proactive in the community. In fact, today, I was in a Zoom call with Lauren, still doing, doing the work. I also know for a fact that a few of my constituents submitted some programs, federal programs, and I forwarded it to your office, and you guys applied, and we got the money. So it's very important as well to have that partnership with your office and the community, because it's not all about the three of you, it's also all of us. And if we don't have that connection, it's, it's, the movement is very slow. As far as Ward Three is concerned, what is the update of that traffic light? I know you mentioned about some of the grants that you're applying, Safe Street for All.
Yeah.
Number one is that traffic lights on Lewis all the way to Ocean, that's number one. Number two, what is the update of the Chatham, Chatham and, I'm blank, Obed, help me out here.
Mariana.
Mariana, thank you, Counselor Fielding. So we've been pushing for it for three years now, and the mayor said it just needs some study or updates from your office. And we've been asked that question so many times. So once and for all, where are we, where are we now?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor, and appreciate the positive feedback. The first project that you referenced, the traffic signals along Broad and Lewis, is funded. We received $300,000 through what's called the Community Connections Grant Program from the Boston NPO. That's the regional agency that sort of funnels federal transportation dollars to communities in the Boston metro region. That is a competitive grant. We also received around, just under $300,000 in a federal earmark to round out that, that total project cost. So there's no, there's no cost to the city. We have, we're essentially done with the specking of the upgrades to the traffic signals. Really, what we're working right now through is administration to bring the federal dollars to the right organization for implementation. The MBTA is likely to be the implementer of that, of that funding, but they're coming from two different sources. So we're working with MassDOT of all agencies, but we're working with MassDOT to both identify where the funding's coming from and how to get it to the right agency for implementation. Our hope was to have that upgrade completed by the end of the summer. It's probably going to take a little bit longer because of that administration, but also, our understanding is there's a pretty significant backlog, backlog on controller equipment for signal upgrades. That's one of the issues we're seeing at the Blossom Street intersection on Linway. There's a, there's a back order for equipment for that. So I would expect that it's, it's going to be a bit later this, this fall, but we're working as diligently as we can to keep that moving forward. As far as the Chatham and Mariana intersection, that is part of the Safe Streets for All grant application. That will be an intersection that will include countermeasures. It could, it could include geometric changes to the intersection itself, new signals or signal upgrades, advance warning for travelers working, you know, traveling down the street. The note I would make on the Safe Streets for All grant program is it's, it's unique in that it's intended to be a systemic change or a systemic implementation for countermeasures, so that we're not looking at one problem in one place. If we were to do that, it would take decades for us to solve our, our safety problems in the city. $12 million is not a ton of money to, to look at the, the network systemically, but for these high-crash corridors, intersections, we're looking at applying them in a way so that it's not just that intersection, it's the corridor leading to that intersection, to make it safer, to slow traffic, to calm it down a little bit more, so that we can see safety improvements. So that's part of that grant application.
Any other questions, comments for Planner Clausen?
One comment here.
Counselor Hogan.
Since we're on an end of session, I'll tell you, since I became counselor in 2019, we had issues with South and Summer Street, and my first email went out one month into being in office and talking to the police department, the fire department, every department, Aaron helping along the way, and all the other departments. We recently just got those lights up, and, and, you know, the CAD calls on those were, were crazy. I mean, crashes and, and injuries and everything going on there. And, and that process did take, it took five years to get those up. And I think they are making a difference in that neighborhood. The people in that neighborhood are much more happy now. So I thank everyone, everyone in the city that helped with that project, and it did take five years to get that done. So don't be frustrated if things don't happen at the snap of a finger, but they go through a process, and when it's finally there, your constituents will be very happy. But I want to thank the planning department and everyone else in the city that helped out with that project. So thank you.
Excellent. Any other councilors, questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Okay, now we're going to the GAR. So trustee chair, yes, Patty, and, yep, perfect. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, everyone. You get two of us.
Perfect. Two for the price of one, huh?
I just want to say, despite the fact that the GAR is closed, and that Wendy Joseph is working here at Lynn City Hall at the moment, this has been, thanks to the city council and the mayor, this has been the most successful year for the Grand Army of the Republic's Hall and Museum. We finally put together enough money to make, to get the elevator construction project off the ground, and it's, it has started moving forward at this, at this time. But that's not the end of the story. The trustees are moving forward on other areas besides preservation and revitalization of the building. We've redone our mission statement, and we want the usage of the building to reflect the needs of the community. So what we've started to do is do community outreach. We're attending events in the city. We have a survey that we will, at the end, analyze and, and use that information when the building reopens. We're, we're also looking at potential funding issues. We don't want the GAR to always be totally dependent on the city for its funding. It's a long-term goal, but it's something that the trustees have been working on the past several, several months. Bradley Gosling is the treasurer, so he can speak more directly to funding issues that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gosling. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, councilors and guests. I speak today as the Secretary and Treasurer for the Board of Trustees in support of the proposed budget for the GAR for fiscal 2025. At the time of the submission, we were not yet sure whether or not the elevator project was actually going to start and whether it was going to be launched. So from me, to both city council, the mayor's office, and a bunch of the rest of the staff, thank you very, very much for getting us across the start line on that. And in participation of either way, we did realign some of the object lines for either continued limited operations or closure. Overall, the only growth is in the payroll line. Remaining lines were realigned and kept at 2024 level. With this, GAR can continue operations from our temporary location in City Hall and start planning for after completion of the elevator. I'm available for questions.
Terrific. Thank you, Brad. Any questions, either Brad or Patty, GAR-related, budget-related? Counselor Field?
No questions. Just want to acknowledge them for their advocacy. It's late, sorry, I'm stumbling on my words.
Okay.
For that elevator, I know the ARPA funding was a great source for that, so I commend the mayor's office and this council for supporting that measure. I know it was an extensive, steep measure, but it really is one of our hidden gems in the city, and it should be accessible to everybody at any time. It'll draw a number of visitors into the city once this project's complete. So again, I commend the Board of Trustees and everybody affiliated with the GAR for their work on that.
Excellent.
Can I just say one thing in response to what you said? Look, the GAR is, is the jewel, but there's, there needs to be a bigger vision. The GAR will attract people, but our vision is that you connect all the jewels of the city to get people to come here. So that's the long-term vision of the trustees. So, and thank you for your kind words.
Excellent.
Thank you again, but it's also another vision that we have, is a slice of the history of the city, centered on veterans, but out of what we did when we redid the mission statement, was expanded not just from Civil War, but all Lynn veterans. And so currently, I and the curator, Wendy Joseph, are starting to dig in. We found some source material that goes all the back, way back to colonial days. We can, we can now trace, at least organizationally, all the way up to the National Guard, 101st Engineers on the Common, which means it brings us all the way to today. Now, how do we bring that to life, and how do we put it as artifacts and displays and tell that story? That's what we've got to work on. But it really is the history of the city.
Sky's the limit, you might say.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're winding down. From Mayor Nicholson's office, Chief of Staff John Tebow. John, I heard congratulations are in order because he recently celebrated his nuptials. Mrs. Tebow as well.
You have to be home--
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm on a tight timeline to get home, so, thank you.
Yes, I'll get home soon.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. In addition to myself and Mayor Nicholson, we have eight, we have a team of eight amazing members. We commit, we remain committed and to strive to exhibit respect for all people within the city, and we place a high priority on constituent services, responsiveness, transparency, accountability, and equity. We constantly look at ways to improve the overall quality of life for all of Lynn, and we work with partners at the state and federal levels to relay the city's priorities and collaborate on mutual goals. We've been working closely with the CFO on our office's operating budget, and while it is not without its challenges, we do still carry out on key priorities, including increasing civic engagement through community events and city staff training around diversity, equity, and inclusion. In light of the difficulties of the city's financial constraints, we've worked to reduce several line items in our budget. The second year, our office has worked with City Hall Departments to host Lin Side Out, which is a growing success, and we look forward to this year's festival, which is taking place on September 7th. So please mark your calendars. This past year, we also coordinated a Halloween event, featuring tables decorated by city departments, as well as a tree lighting and a holiday event here in City Hall Square, and held an Earth Day event at the Commons. Students across the city joined us for yet another amazing Student Government Day, and we're anxiously planning for the Fourth of July fireworks, which we hope you'll join us for. We continue to focus on rein-- We continue to focus on reinvigorating city boards and committees with diverse and qualified appointments. We remain committed to engaging residents and fully embrace our community's many identities at each and every flag raising we host. This includes the numerous heritage events that we have been fortunate enough to showcase here in the city and look forward to continuing to celebrate our residents and their rich cultures. Our simultaneous interpretation equipment continues to be available to our residents for use at public events and has greatly assisted our communication abilities here in the building for city events. We've completed several ARPA projects here on the city side, which include an overhaul of the city's website, and I'll answer Counsel McLean's question as soon as I'm done here, and the launch of the See Click Fix app, which allows residents to report and track issues in real time. Many more ARPA projects have kicked off, and we look forward to their completion over the next few years. We are grateful for all the council collaboration and resident input during this process. We continue to work with the L P D, the city council, L P S, and many community partners to address community violence and are extremely proud of the community canvases we have held in city neighborhoods with many of you. And we also are proud of the mentor spotlight events that have occurred. We're moving closer to launching the Lynn Comm team, which will provide our residents with a culturally competent unarmed emergency response, and we will continue to connect with the community and stakeholders as this comes to fruition. We look forward to building on all these successes in the coming fiscal year. Thank you again for having me, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, John. Questions for Mr. Tebow, representing the mayor's office?
Could I answer the question about the ADA accessibility? So that's something that, when we first launched the city website, it became apparent that the capabilities of the consultant that we used to develop the city website were limited. When this was brought to our attention, we started to look for vendors who could plug into our city website, and that allowed us to work with the purchasing department and our ARPA compliance officer to begin looking at other vendors as well. So while I don't have a final answer to say that we have a vendor selected, we're in the process of selecting a vendor that would be able to plug directly into our website to alert us of ADA compliance issues and what needs to be updated.
Okay. How long have you guys been working on that? Has it been a while now, the finder?
It's been a work in progress since the website launch, which was in October. We started getting inquiries and notifications that certain things were a little bit off, and so we originally went to the vendor that we had first used to revamp the website and were informed of their limited limitations. And then that's when we started looking at other vendors that could be plugged in because we'd be spending some money and want to get the best results. We started to look at other vendors who can offer similar services, and we haven't run a full procurement process. I don't know that we need to, given the cost, but we certainly want to get the best services for the city's dollar.
Okay, and I have another question about the diversity, equity, inclusion expenses. Zero? And with what the city does do, I know there's a Camerah Festival happening coming up soon. There has been women's events happened here. Like, where does, why is it zero? Where did that money come from?
Yeah, that's actually just a typo. So in that object number, which is 79XX, and the one that's underneath it, the All Lynn Emergency Response Team, that funding, which is $20,000, should actually be shifted up. And the All Lynn Emergency Response Team, which is now known as Lynn Comm, has actually been shifted to the Public Health Department. So the D E I.
So the All Lynn Emergency Response Team is zero now, and where is it at?
So that line item has been moved to the Department of Public Health.
Oh, Public Health.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, those were my questions.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Tebow? Counsel Field?
Thank you, Chair Lapia. Thank you, Mr. Tebow. You know, the mayor presents a balanced budget for fiscal year 2025, but if we could amend it to include a color printer, that would be a request.
Just one?
Whatever we need at City Hall.
I'll talk to Tim Lennon about that.
Thank you.
All the questions?
I have a question, sorry.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Meji Madri.
I'm sorry, thank you. You mentioned translation services, right? So that falls under your office as well?
It does, yeah.
It does, okay. So the question is, so you mentioned translation being available for events. Like, how does somebody book a translator? Is that paid through your office or no?
So typically, what we offer, the simultaneous interpretation devices are for use across city events. They would come in to obtain those devices. If it's a city-sponsored event and somebody is requesting language access, they would come in and see Berta Tavara's in our office, who's the Language Access Coordinator. We can provide those services as available for city events. If they're external events, we have the devices available, but we can't, we wouldn't be able to cover interpretation for those external events.
Thank you. But is it an option to, like, borrow them from your office?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and you would also see Berta, who's our Language Access Coordinator.
Awesome. And is it possible to get translation services at all of our council meetings? Is that something that can happen?
It's something that we're certainly working toward. If the request is put in, we usually try and honor that, and it just depends on what's going on that night. Oftentimes, there's other events, or if we only have one interpreter, sometimes they get called for other things. But I can certainly talk with the team and see if that is something that can be done.
Thank you.
Counsel Hogan.
John, we did miss you, but Dan Yeh, you did a great job filling in, so.
I knew we would. I can leave again if you want.
Well, we got used to Dan Yeh, so you better not take another vacation.
Shout out to Dan Yeh.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Shout out. Anyone else?
We're hungry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we're heading into fourth hour, so. Okay, thank you, John. I do have a couple of remarks before we close. One is for the council, city council office. Council President Walsh sent some communications. He did state that the council has no issues with our budget, which is good. He also could not be here this evening. He had to attend the Lynn Housing Authority Scholarship Event, where his family is supportive of, and his daughter Jaela is graduating middle school as well this evening. And same with Vice President Chakoudas, who had a previously scheduled meeting and could not be here this evening. So with that said, setting the stage, it's been a long hearing. Thank you all for persevering. We will take this up, this matter, as a proposed budget from Mayor Nicholson, one week from tonight, Tuesday, June 11th, at our regular council meeting at 5:30. There will be a public hearing on the budget, on the proposed budget, and a vote for its adoption or not. So we look forward to next Tuesday. Thank you, councilors, for coming, and even if you're not part of the budget chair, budget subcommittee, rather, for asking such great questions and leaving, hopefully, with a lot of information from all of our department heads and designees. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Field and Hogan, and all those in favor signify by standing aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
We did it. We did it.